Mr. Summers, please, a report out of the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council met in closed session, considered item number one regarding inducement litigation, provided comments to staff and council, and took no reportable action. The council did not consider item number two regarding initiation of litigation. That will be continued to a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. So the closed session is over.
Um, could I?
Mm-hmm.
Was any vote taken? Was any motion made?
No reportable action was taken.
And would you consider a vote to be a reportable action?
No reportable action was taken.
I understand, but my question to you is, is a vote considered a reportable action? As a city attorney, I have a right to ask the city attorney that question.
The outcome of some votes is reportable action. No reportable action was taken.
So...
I'm hearing him say this one doesn't qualify as that.
Right. Yeah, yeah, no, I understand what he's saying. Believe me, I understand what he's saying. So I'm gonna make one other statement here, um, for the record, because I think it's important. As I indicated to my fellow council members, I have an unequivocal right to be in that session. I walked out of that session hoping to give them the chance to actually work something through. They were unable to do that. So this is from the FPPC. A public official may make, participate in making, and influence a governmental decision about whether he or she will be provided with a defense or indemnification for damages where the agency is obliged to provide the defense and indemnification if the public official was acting with the scope of his or her employment. This has been information since June of 2023 that has been, I've been given by the city attorney the exact opposite of that, and I have recused myself.
Ms. Ruel, can I, let me just, Ms. Ruel, please, let me just point out one thing.
Yeah, please.
If any of us bring up subtle legal arguments that we want to just read, we all know that there's opinions on both sides. So I hear what you're saying, but it's, you're, it's making a statement of which there can be no rebuttal, so this seems like the wrong place for that.
Well, except for the opposite of the statement has been made many, many, many times, and has forced me to recuse myself, and I do not have a forum in any other place to speak about what is going on here.
I hear you.
I'm glad you hear me, because I'm talking. And, you know, it's just one grave injustice after another, one wasted opportunity after another. And I think I have a right to know, I mean, I will find a second vote, and we will have another indemnification, and I will refuse to leave based on an FPPC advice letter. And, you know, all that simply means is, I mean, I gave you guys the opportunity to figure this out, and you did not figure it out. You did not, you were not able to, uh, you were not able to follow the law, as is the case so many times.
Ms. Ruel, I have to, I want us to get on with the rest of parts of our meeting. This is one part of many parts. Okay?
Uh, one part of many parts. Yeah, that's fine. You're the presiding, you're the presiding officer. So I will, I will accede to that.
Thank you. So I'm gonna close the closed session, and I'm gonna open the open session. Okay. Mr. Montgomery, please roll call.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Gilman.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Rule.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Mang.
Here.
Mr. Montgomery, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, Mayor. Welcome, community. Please rise as you are able. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then, what I have now, Mr. Harvey, you want to make an announcement?
Sure, Mayor, we could do this now, or I could do it during public comment, but if you'd like to do it now, your call, you're the-
Oh, I misunderstood. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Kristi Billings, would you please come to the podium? I'd like to introduce Ms. Billings to the council and to the community. Ms. Billings is our new interim finance director. It was her idea to come down here tonight. She wanted to make sure that you all knew who she was, and the community got to see her face. And she even gave me the courtesy of a little bit of background, which I'm just gonna take a moment to, to read. So, uh, tonight, one of the actions on your agenda, Ms. Billings is a retired CalPERS annuitant. So as you're gonna hear in a moment, she has a long career in finance, and so we're asking you to comply with CalPERS regulations and allow us to bring her onboard in this retired CalPERS annuitant capacity. So, Kristi, uh, Ms. Billings has served in local government finance for 35 years, and she retired in October of 2023 from the city of Agoura Hills. Uh, just a little bit of, uh, her background, she was the director of finance for Agoura Hills for 15 years. Um, and she also previously served as deputy director of finance for the city of Camarillo. Uh, she is actively involved in the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers, which is the, uh, industry organization, and has served in several board positions. She's a graduate of UC Santa Barbara, she resides in Camarillo, and when she isn't doing numbers, she likes to travel, especially visiting her new granddaughter in Florida. So I'd just like to give Ms. Billings a couple of moments to say hello, and then, uh, thank you, Mayor, for this opportunity. Ms. Billings.
Wanted to say hello and thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Thanks for the opportunity to serve the citizens. Although I retired in 2023, I love helping out local government. Ojai's a jewel in Ventura County, and I'm really enjoying getting to know the staff, and I'm honored to work with them. So, thank you. I look forward to assisting the city of Ojai.
Thank you. Nice to meet you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Moving on, can I have a review and approval of the agenda?
I'd like to pull item number two.
I'll second that.
And I'll state the reasons. I was the one who originally, I was one of the, uh, council members who originally asked for this to be public. Um, but it has been, but because these conversations are still happening, and, uh, and we, uh, and we have a big agenda tonight, I would, I would move to approve the rest of the agenda and to pull that item.
A second. Roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor.
Um, I, I would like discussion on that.
Yep.
So you're pulling this because it's an ongoing consideration? Or, I'm, I'm confused, because, um, I thought that was gonna be an immediate kind of, you were gonna go in there and say, can we make this an open session item? I didn't realize that-
It, there, I'm pulling it because we're, because there is not agreement about the, the direction moving forward for this, and also because, uh, I think it could, I, I think it could be, it would be better for us to have it at a different time.
So you're still willing to, to make it open? I mean, the idea for an open meeting, as I understand it, is not that you come out having decided something, and then you share it, but that process of wrestling with the question is something that the community is, should be privy to, to find out exactly who's thinking what, right? I mean, that's the whole idea.
And this is why I'm willing to have it at a different time, but not tonight.
So you're, this is just a postponement?
Correct.
And you're still committed to transparency on this issue?
I've always been committed to transparency, as long as it fits within the, uh, the, what protects the city the most. So yes, I'm very committed to transparency.
And are you committed to explaining, um, your rationale, like, what protects the city the most? Because that's a somewhat interpretive statement.
I'm, I'm not going to argue this anymore. I'm just going to ask for, if we could call the question.
Okay.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
No.
Councilmember Mang.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. So we will now go to public comments. I'm seeing to Ron Salarsano, please, and then Mika Sitting, and then Joel Fox.
Thank you.
Oh, gosh. There we go.
All right. Thank you so much, members of council. My name is Ron Salarsano. I am the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley, and I mostly wanted to come to talk about a, an upcoming event that's happening this Saturday at the library. Uh, this is one that we've been planning for a while. I talked about it last time I was here. We're gonna have certified master gardener Danny Brucius visiting the Ojai Library at 2:00 PM on Saturday, March 15th. She's gonna be delivering a timely talk on Firewise Living, called From Structure to Landscape. This is a practical workshop that's going to be equipping homeowners with essential skills to reduce wildfire risks. Participants will learn strategies for creating defensible space around structures, including vegetation management, landscaping techniques, and home modification approaches. The, uh, the course is gonna cover fire-resistant landscaping principles, structural hardening methods, and emergency preparedness to protect homes in wildfire-prone regions. So yeah, that's happening on Saturday. Uh, we also have, uh, we actually just had a lot of other programs, but we also have our ongoing slate of programming and events at the Ojai Library, our UGALA Lee Club on Mondays, Storytime on Wednesday mornings. We have Fiber Arts and Crafts on Sundays. We have our Enrichment Center Monday through Thursday after school at 2:00 PM, and just a whole lot of other stuff going on. So I encourage you to check out what we're doing. If you have any questions, you can always reach out to me or visit our website at www.vencolibrary.org. That's it, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Salarsano. Mika Sitting, Joel Fox, and Star Child. Oh, it's Mica. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Hi, my name is Mica Satig. Uh, I live over in Leslie's district, over on Drown, and, uh, thank you for letting me speak tonight. Uh, first of all, I wanna say, congrats. Uh, I've been here for like 10 years in Ojai. I'm not a, a local, I moved here. Um, and my daughters have gone to school here, and I've, uh, worked at a couple different schools here, and it's my first time attending a city council meeting. I always watch it on YouTube. But you all sound much better at normal speed, not 2X speed. Um, I wanna say congratulations to Mayor Gilman. Like, ever since you've become the mayor, like, the council's gotten more, I feel like, more cooperative, and just a better tone overall, so, uh, good job to you. Um, I wanna say, thanks. Oh, I have like a grab bag, I'm gonna speak real quick on some things. I might talk about some things that are on the agenda just very briefly, because I can't stay the whole time. So, good job working with the Parks and Recreation Commission. Please get that done. Like, it's been two years almost. Please work with the school district, especially on the Aquatic Center. Uh, the school district is doing lots of cool stuff. Their board works really well together, and I think the city could take advantage of that, and there should be more communication between the two. Um, watch out for the Becker Group. Uh, they're developers, and I'm not sure they always have the best interest of Ojai in mind, so, say that. Um, and Ventura as well. And then, uh, I know you're gonna talk about, like, priorities, student, uh, city council priorities. Um, please make housing a priority, and not just rental housing, but like, housing for, long-term for people. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joel Fox, Star Child, and then Brenda Kraut.
Hello, folks. Um, I'm here representing the Fourth of July Planning Committee, and I was intending to come when you're discussing, uh, the question of drones, but it's unclear if it's on the schedule. I've been watching your, um, agendas. Anyway, I decided to share some information. Uh, the Fourth of July Planning Committee has looked into drones in the past, and, uh, that would work fine, uh, I think, with the committee, that's no problem. Um, but, uh, they're significantly more expensive. So, um, some women approached us with the idea that, that y'all could pitch in and actually help pay for that. Um, that could work. Um, this, this year, we're already well on our way. Like, we've already got the fireworks going and stuff like that. So something to consider. Um, it is a significant commitment, though, because if we do switch to drones, and, let's say, the next year there isn't money, you know, like, it's probably, just a ballpark around $100,000 a year, probably, the city would have to put forth for that. If we do lose that, uh, lose our, kind of our place in line with the fireworks group, we probably couldn't get it back. That's the kind of thing. So once there is this commitment, it needs to be a really solid commitment.
Okay.
And, um, I don't know if y'all go to the fireworks. We've been doing it for over 60 years. So there's people who go there with their, you know, with, who went there as children, who are there with their grandchildren. There's thousands of people come. It's a really important thing for people, and it's such an amazing community on the, the Nordoff field. I think it's a really fantastic thing, and one of the most intimate Ojai experiences. I joined the committee because I like fireworks, and I, I, I think they're, they're really one of my favorite art forms, and I try, wanted to try to elevate it even more. Um, but I'm happy with drones, too, as long as it just doesn't end, because it's like, again, it's one of these few things we have, one of the things we have in Ojai that are still, still going. And, um, uh, if you have any more questions, you can ask me. I'll, I'll be here. I'm trying to think what other stuff that's important here. Um, I, it might've been underneath the, tonight I was told maybe it would be under a fire thing. I just wanna say that there, the, um, fire isn't, I don't consider it a really big risk with this. I know it scares dogs, and there's environmental concerns, but the, the Ventura Fire, uh, chief or whatever, she loves coming every year. We have fire trucks, and there isn't really a lot of records. There's lots of fireworks that start fires, but they're not professional fireworks. And so I don't really think that's an issue so much. Um, that includes, the thing is scaring dogs, PTSD for veterans, all those things aren't really focused on those 20 minutes. It's really about the, you know, all week long and things like that. So, anyway, I'm out of time, I think, but if you have any questions, I'll be here. Thank you.
Could I ask a quick question?
Yes.
So what I understood you to say was that, um, if you were to stop the fireworks and move to a drone, we should commit long-term to the drone, because once you lose the contract with the fireworks company, it's much harder to reactivate something.
You heard probably the most important part. Exactly, exactly. Yeah, so it's, it's just a really serious commitment.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I have, I have one more follow-up question, and that is, when do you need to know from us a decision in order to make sure that we're ready for this Fourth of July?
Or, you're saying, you're suggesting next Fourth of July?
Next Fourth of Ju-
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Can I jump in really quick, counsel? You do have a goal-setting item on the agenda, and I do believe there are probably one or two proposed goals where you could have a tactic that relates to what Mr. Fox has been talking about, and I'd recommend for a more thoughtful discussion if Mr. Fox is willing to hang out for a little bit during that, because I know that there's lots of questions.
Sure. Can I just talk about it later, then?
Yeah, absolutely.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Thanks for being flexible. Star Child, Brenda Kraut, and then Souza Francina.
Why wasn't Leslie allowed to be in the closed session meeting that you just had for two hours? That's an important question for me, because Leslie's my council member, and she represents me, and when she's in the room, I know that my interests are represented, and when she's not in the room, who's representing me? I don't understand why Leslie isn't allowed to be in the room, and Councilmember Whitman is allowed to be in the room. I personally think both should be allowed in the room, because both of their districts deserve representation. But Councilmember Whitman has already made a statement in the Burn v. Rule lawsuit. It's one that was mostly struck by Judge Coats, and it's one that Judge Coats ruled misrepresented a letter from the district attorney to this council. Mr. Whitman seems to be conflicted, at least in that aspect. How many lawyers were in the closed session meeting that we just had? I counted two. Were there three? Were there more? How many thousand dollars an hour is the city paying for lawyers to give advice to part of this council, not the whole part? How much is that costing? How much time are we spending on this Burn v. Rule lawsuit? It sounds like we're gonna continue item number two from the closed session about the two lawsuits that we're not 100% sure what they are. And it sounds like also we're gonna continue item number one. Are we gonna invite multiple lawyers to the next closed session meeting? How many closed session meetings are we gonna have? What are we not doing while we're talking endlessly in closed sessions? Are we not fixing the roads? Are we not covering potholes? I talked to my neighbors, and I asked them, what's important to you, city politics? And last weekend, I heard from a constituent of Councilmember Whitman, who told me how embarrassed he is by this city council. It's not the first time that I've heard that from citizens. And I think it's finally time that we concentrate on the important things in this city, and that we move past all this strife, and that you work together and not separately, and you're, and you become, and you are good stewards of the public money and the public trust.
Thank you, Star Child. Brenda Kraut, Souza Francina, and then Bill Miley.
I just wanted to express my disappointment that you have pulled the indemnification of Leslie Rule from this agenda again. I mean, I'm a taxpayer, a longtime-
Microphone closer, Brenda, please. Thank you.
I'm a longtime taxpayer here in Ojai, and I'm tired of you spending all this money on attorneys, that you should be, be listening to and understanding the law in front of you, that all of you would like implemented and enacted to, to defend each one of you, if you were in Leslie's position, for any reason of your actions on this council. So, I mean, I think that it's a disgrace to this whole, this whole council, that you have let this go on so long, and that you are segregating a person that's within your body. You need to be working as, as a cohesive, cohesive group, not a, um, fighting, infighting. So, and you're spending my money doing it. If you wanna spend your own personal money to do all this bickering, go ahead and do it. Leave our tax money out of it. Maybe it doesn't make any difference when you look at a tax, at a attorney's bill, like I saw on the last check register for $81,000. Maybe that doesn't bother you, because it's not coming out of your personal checking account. Well, it bothers me, because I know it's coming out of my taxes. So, please consider that and get this item taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kraut. Souza Francina, Bill Miley, and John Drucker.
Um, I mostly agree with the previous speakers, and I want the public, am I okay with this mic? So I, I wanna make clear to the public that I was in favor of indemnifying Councilwoman Leslie Rule from the very beginning, and I wanna read to you a letter that she wrote to former city manager James Vega, May 3rd, 2023. Very simple. Please accept this letter as a formal request to ask the city of Ojai to indemnify me under Government Code 825 against the lawsuit filed by Sabrina Venskas and Brian Akri-Britten versus Rule. Please note, I would like this request considered in an open session, and I see no legitimate reason for it to be held from the public. The following month, in June, we had an open session. At that session, I, at the very end, it's all on tape, I asked Sabrina Venskas to come to the podium, and I asked her, how does this serve the community? How does this serve the public? And she didn't answer. She left the podium. And people are still wondering, how does this waste of money serve the public? At the beginning of the closed session, a taxpayer member of the public came to the podium, and she believes still, to this moment, after two years, that if Leslie, Councilwoman Leslie Rule is not indemnified, it somehow saves the taxpayers' money. She repeatedly said that, uh, we should not be paying for Councilmember Leslie Rule to break the law. And, Leslie, it was pointed out that a judge, a superior court found that she did not break the law, and the public has to understand that this is costing way, way more, not only taxpayer money, but the valuable time of five council members, staff. It's a waste of time and money. You're an, I, I went through this nightmare. For those that don't know, I was on the city council 12 years. I went through this nightmare last year. Every closed session was like a bad dream that just didn't end. You know, we hired another law firm to tell us nothing, you know, that we paid. It's, it is an embarrassment, the amount of taxpayer money that we are wasting, and I hope to God this is resolved in public soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Francina. Bill Miley, and then John Drucker.
Hello. I have three comments. I am surprised the city manager is hiring people who already have retired and are now taking a new job, a second job. I am sure there are well-qualified people who are working their first job and may be looking for another, a move, or looking to come to Ojai. Also wonder if the public knows the salary of the director of finance. It's up to $250,000. Second item, I like the Becker Group. This has to do with indemnification. With the process of indemnification apparently agreed upon, the city decides to make an offer. And I know that wasn't voted on. So it's not official or a policy, yet city administration was authorized to seek outside counsel for that offer, implying, as I understand it, we wanna settle. I had a lot more to say if it was on the agenda. With the city offer made public for indemnification, it seems that you're acknowledging that Councilmember Rule should, as an elected official, should be indemnified. I read the state codes regarding government officials and employees being protected from civil suits claiming injury, Government Code 825. Third paragraph, "exceptions to the duty to indemnify or provide a defense include," is this quote, "when the employee acts with fraud, corruption, and actual malice." The ultimate outcome of the civil suit seems to be irrelevant under the law. And I don't see any fraud, any corruption, or actual malice, just kind of confusion.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. John Drucker.
Good evening, John Drucker, or myself. I wanna say that I, I just echo the comments of Star Child, Brenda, Souza, and Bill. In fact, Bill, the other day, wrote me an email saying, "I've read Government Code Section 825.2, and it seems very clear that the, the obligation to indemnify Leslie is absolute." And I wrote him back, and I said, "You just, you just accomplished in one paragraph what a firm that the city paid $117,000 could not reach on its own." I told him, perhaps, to send a, a bill to the city for $200,000, because it was so much more worthwhile. All I wanna say is that I'm disappointed that this meeting is not being held openly, because in open session, I feel is the only possible way that you might get something other than the bad advice that you've been getting so far in closed session. Myers-Navey undertook an assignment under Government Code 825, and then ignored it, and analyzed it under 995, didn't read half of 995 anyway, but came to the wrong conclusion, for which the city is paying, has paid, $117,000. Moreover, I would like to request that Matt Summers recuse himself in the future on all matters involving anything to do with the Burn versus Rule lawsuit, because it was he who created the closed session statements that got this whole ball rolling. It was his negligent policing of the closed sessions that compounded the problem. It was he who- It was he who shouted Leslie down incorrectly. It was he who suggested to the previous council that the council sue Leslie. And now he's, and now he has a profound conflict of interest in the desire for Leslie to lose because it would vindicate all of his previous mistakes. As for the the repeated, the once again failure to indemnify Leslie tonight, all I can tell you is that you're playing with fire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drucker. Mr. Montgomery, anything online?
Yes, Mayor, we currently have one raised hands, but I'm speaking to our Zoom participants now. We are taking general public comment. Please raise your hand now. First, we'll have Larry Steingold, now followed by Clay Creasy. Larry, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. Good evening. I'm kind, you know, everybody thinks it's funny, but you people are spending more goddamn money than this city city has on lawyers, on advice from the same lawyer who's making more money giving you more advice to do the same thing. How much money is going to be pushed away and thrown away because you can't come to a deal? All right, th- this is absurd. We have roads that need to get paved. We've got services that need to get funded. We have priorities. A month ago, somebody showed up with a petition for two hundred and fifty names that we don't have a police officer. And their big thing was, oh, we need money for the arts, we need money for fire hardening, we need money for all these other priorities. And you chose a police officer. That was a good thing. Okay, but now it's not your money, you're not being good stewards. Okay, this is not good. Two of you, three of you, don't want to settle it? Fine, tell, stand up, tell us which ones you are and tell us why, and don't do it in closed session. Do you not have enough character to say, hey, I don't want to pay her? Okay, we know, I'm assuming Mr. Whitman doesn't want to pay her. I got that. Who else doesn't want to pay her? Raise your hand. Have the courage to do that and go tell your constituents that you want to keep going and spending money. At least have the courage to do that. It doesn't take that much effort. Okay, you campaigned about transparency and honesty and bringing all this wonderful things to the city council. And yet you're doing the same thing. So it doesn't take a lot of viewing by people on either side of the deal to watch the money go down the chute to save somebody's ego or to protect somebody's legal rear end because of something some lawyer suggested or whatever. But the people are fed up. Okay? And then I'd like to ask a question that I guess you're, and I'll just leave it at that and wait for another agenda. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Steingold.
Our last raised hand currently is Clay Creasy. Mr. Creasy, you have the floor. Mr. Creasy, I've given you the opportunity to unmute. You may speak now. Looks like we're having technical difficulties. I see Mr. Creasy is unmuted. We'll give you one last chance here. And we'll have to move on, Mayor.
Okay. That's the end of the public communications. I'd like to move on to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, before we do so.
Please go.
I'm sorry, may I make a couple just clarifications from what you said, just for council awareness?
Absolutely.
One item discussed was the Aquatics Center and the Nordoff Pool. And I just wanted council and the community to be aware that the city and Ojai Unified School District are discussing public use at that facility. And we're trying to figure out how to make that a reality, and we will be coming back to the council once we have something so that we can share that information. But that's in the midst.
Thank you.
Another item I want to clarify, the city will be opening a public and open recruitment for the full time finance director position. The city does not hire retired CalPERS annuitants to fill positions permanently. That is prohibited by the government code and and law in in California. So Ms. Billings is is serving in an interim capacity. But we will be, you know, launching an open recruitment in short order. Also, the top step for the salary range for finance director, just like all the director positions at the city, is two thousand sixteen annually, not two thousand and fifty. That is the city manager salary range.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Moving on to the consent calendar, do I have a motion to approve, or does somebody want to pull anything out of consent?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Yep, any discussion? Mr. Montgomery.
Ready, Mayor. Councilmember Meng.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Okay, so moving on to item number three, city council goals. Mr. Harvey.
Boom, okay, here we are. If I could ask Mr. Montgomery to please share his screen. I'm going to propose something to the council and you could, as our assistant city attorney says, you know, trash it or treasure it. This is just a concept. I've only received from from, I know you've all been very busy. The the mayor gave me a list of his proposed tactics to go with the the goals. I know this does not necessarily reflect the sentiment of the entire city council. But I thought perhaps this was a good starting point for this evening. I also want to throw out that, and you may remember me saying this at the start, goal setting sometimes takes a few sessions. And so if we need to come back, you know, one or two or even three more times to get it right, that's fine because you're putting together the work plan that you will function under for the entire time you're together. And and that's really crucial to to get it right. And I know that there are some people, some who may have spoken during the public comment portion, who may want to participate in this and some who are, you know, not here tonight. And so this is a process. So if is it, I don't know, let me just first do a head nod check. Is is this concept of starting with just the mayor's tactics as a as a starting point acceptable? Or would you prefer a different approach where we go individually by goal and and you all throw out your tactics? Either way.
Let me just add one tiny point, which is this. Those items, when you're going to see under each of those things, I'm not saying let's do it, I'm saying let's investigate it. And so they're from conversations we have had, it's me reaching out to the community. So this is only a starting list to be determined. So even, for example, the drones that we talked about, that's one that I actually wanted to add on there that I omitted. But that doesn't mean let's do it, it means let's figure it out, just as we would any 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 item, so.
So I I'd suggest that we go goal by goal. And we all comment on tactics, including the ones by the mayor, that I think probably at this point, all of us are in that position where we're saying, let's get some feedback from staff about, you know, whether this is a feasible way to approach this. With the idea that we'll reach some reasonable point in time and suspend our goal setting.
We will say uncle, yes.
And then so that we can finish our agenda. So I I don't know what the reasonable amount of time is, but I'll suggest forty five minutes.
That sounds reasonable.
Okay, and Mr. Montgomery, are you prepared to edit and add as as we go? Okay, very good.
Yes, sir.
And and, sorry.
So I I came prepared to, with some tactics to add to the list. So as as we go one by one, I, yeah, I I'd like to to like have this be a brainstorming session.
Great. Anybody have an objection to this approach? It's okay? Councilmember Rule?
Great.
Good with you? Okay, okay. All right, well, let's start the first, and 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 sorry, let me just add one more thing. These are the nine proposed goals you came up with last time. You don't have to keep these, right? You you could, you could change the wording, you could add one, you could remove one, that's all. It's all on the table as we go on this journey. So this is just, you know, working document.
One quick question, it's what's not clear to me is when the public comments make sense. Since we'll be brainstorming this stuff, normally we'd ask questions of you. It seems like that's where we are right now. I don't have, I only have one public comment in front of me. We might take it and go forward. But I'm open to your ideas.
Well, your colleagues should go first. I have my own ideas, but.
Oh, no, right. So if if everybody were to go and then we were to take any public comments?
I I think that would make the most sense because then you'd have a baked cake, if you will, somewhat, and then you, right, that that should be good.
At least half baked, are we okay with that?
With the understanding that some of the public comment that you receive may ensue a little bit of an additional discussion where you want to tweak or add, right?
Great.
Sound good?
Yep.
Okay, great. So let's just go for it. Affordable housing. I'm not going to read to everybody unless somebody cannot read what's on the screen. Everybody read what's on the screen? Okay, let's let's blow it up a little bit. Okay, so I will for the benefit of the audience. Sorry, everybody, you have to listen to me talk a lot. These are Mayor Gilman's proposed starting tactics. Number one, research slash establish a housing trust. Number two, annual financial contribution to help of Ojai for rental assistance slash needs as determined. Number three, research expanding Whispering Oaks. Number four, partner with Ojai Unified School District on affordable housing for staff at downtown property and or build affordable housing on city land. Number five, creation of a housing commission addressing affordable housing and homelessness.
Just one quick question for clarification. Item number four, affordable, is that affordable the same as workforce housing?
That's an excellent question. It can be, but I I would say if if council, Councilmember Meng, that's a, that's a, I would probably add that detail, affordable either slash workforce or affordable and or something like that. I think that's really important.
Absolutely.
They're having that discussion at the school district.
Yeah, no, that's a good clarification. I like that.
And at this stage, it may be better to preserve flexibility between affordable and workforce because that taps into more grant opportunities.
So, Mr. Montgomery, I'm going to ask you to please, oh, wait, wait, we're, oh, you're changing the goal title itself.
Number four.
I think we're just, let's only focus on the tactics right now. So on the tactics, Mr. Montgomery, you're going to change that to read affordable slash workforce housing, just just that one, just that one part.
After the word affordable.
Undo it, undo it, go back. All you're doing is, where it says affordable, just make it say slash workforce, both times in that sentence.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Down below too, right? Yep, okay.
I'd I'd like to add two more tactics to this to explore. One is looking to somehow collaborate with the Ventura Home Share program. Or maybe look at at what we can do to 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 build or to expand something like that here. I would also like to look at some kind of transitional housing for.
Let's first get that, so I'm going to suggest we splash down the tactic, then we can see if we have head nods that want to keep that, okay? So this one, you were saying collabor- collaborate, not collaboration. Collaborate with Ventura Home Share.
Right, which basically is a program where if someone is single and they have a home and extra space, then Home Share would partner them with someone who is, who.
Collaborate on, collaborate with Ventura Home Share on a Home Share program.
Yep.
That's clumsy, but that, I think we understand what we're saying there. Home Share program. Okay, great. And the second one you wanted to throw down?
The second one is, I would like to look at, for our recruiting efforts and for our staff here, look at a, like a dorm style or transitional housing.
I'm going to suggest modifying number four, or either 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 splitting number four out into two separate tactics, or just that second part and or build affordable slash workforce. You know, and maybe if the paren that's saying, including potential dorm, close paren, housing on city land. That's what I'm going to suggest.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Other councilmembers want to add or remove or embellish on these tactics?
Yeah. I I'd like to have us look at strategies or legal viability of being able to enforce a much richer percentage of affordable housing, and particularly in the low and very low income category than what the state is typically mandating, which is somewhere around fifteen or twenty percent. And I think we we need to be looking at probably the reverse of that if we're going to do something meaningful.
I'm going to ask our city attorney to jump in and give me a nice little synopsis of that.
Yeah, the synopsis phrase for that is an.
Ready, Weston?
Investigate an inclusionary housing ordinance.
Thank you. Perfect.
I like it.
Okay. Does anybody want to remove any of the listed tactics here?
I just, one clarification on number three, I don't know the feasibility of literally Whispering Oaks, so I wanted to say parenthetically, research expanding Whispering Oaks slash or the equivalent, if I can, meaning housing that is thirty percent of the person's income, no matter what their income is, whatever that means. So just parenthetically, or the equivalent. Because it might be Whispering Oaks or it might not.
So, Mr. Mayor, are you speaking to just, are you, are you, are you asking to expand the the program that's in place there? Are you asking to build additional affordable housing or, sorry, I mean.
Let me, let me, I'll just leave it as is and make it easy, and because then maybe what Mr. Whitman brought up in number seven may offer equivalent, which is fine with me. But so let's literally look at expanding literally Whispering Oaks, just to see if it's possible.
Okay, just for my benefit, Mr. Montgomery, put in, put in a paren at the end of three and seven. Okay, and at the end of three, I want you to put seven, and at the end of seven, I want you to put three.
And a dotted curve line, please.
All right, okay, so thank you.
And then my my comment about, I think, all of these. And I think, you know, maybe this goes without saying, but I think we need to, you know, look at the economic feasibility, you know, what money we have, where can we get more money? But also then kind of a conceptual total amount of money each year that we're going to devote towards these housing issues and.
Okay, so I'm going to say number eight, I'm sorry, I'm just going to jump in this way because I'm just going to, otherwise we will, yeah, okay. I'm going to say research, potential city council budget policy related to housing allocation.
Or fiscal priority, whatever.
So this could also live in in your in your fiscal sustainability goal if you want. So Weston, on the end of this, please put a paren.
Please help me with, please help me with the.
Research potential city council budget policy related to housing allotment. Okay, and then in a, in a paren, please put goal eight.
Yep.
Fiscal sustainability. That's just a note for me, just that know that this could potentially also live there. Goal eight, fiscal sustainability.
Is that acceptable?
Okay.
Yep.
And what about something I don't know, because I was thinking with my goals, like some type of incentive incentives or vouchers? So would that, could that be added with number eight?
I think actually what you're talking about with that, so that, that that could be, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, councilmember. So are you talking about rental assistance or housing voucher?
Right.
Program? Okay, so why don't you help me with this?
Yeah, I think that might come in under number two.
Yeah, true.
Because it's, it could be a partnership through the help, through help of Ojai, or it could be a city run program.
Put rental, put voucher, housing voucher or rental assistance, rental assistance or housing voucher there.
Even seven, as it starts to develop, you could say, oh, we could build some incentive for expanding section eight or whatever, but that's what all come out.
Put a paren that says seven after this as well.
Cool.
And it hard, the distinction between the two is city money used to help housing. Inclusionary housing ordinance is typically requiring private developers to build more affordable housing.
Right.
So both ways to get to the same goal, but two, two different approaches, tactics.
Okay, anything else to add to affordable housing before we move to the next goal?
I I would like to add a live work environment, so investigating potential live work situations. I don't know, that can also go under economic development and then.
No, I think that's great. I think number, let's add, throw down number nine, Mr. Montgomery. Councilmember, tell me this is okay, research feasible live work strategies.
Strategies, options, alternatives, you know, any of those.
Strategies, comma, options, alternatives, okay?
But then you could parenthetically put that with the diversify the income, I mean, the economy rather.
Yeah, definitely.
It's a great.
You you could, and so let's put a paren there, Mr. Montgomery, at the end. And that's going to say goal six, goal six, diversifying economy slash tourism management. Potentially, it could, of course. Yes. Yes.
Cool.
And the final one would be something about.
Ten, please.
You know, building with alternative building materials or some sort of, I don't know if it's education, I don't know if it's, I don't know how that actually plays out. Even if it's just updating a building code to make sure that, you know, it aligns with the international standards, which is, you know, finding alternative building materials to be code compliant.
Yeah.
So something like that. I don't know that it comes under affordable housing.
We'll put it there. I think that's a good place for a placeholder. It does make sense to me. Yes, so maybe just explore, Mr. Montgomery. Explore alternative building methods and materials and consider updating the building code accordingly, something like that.
I might suggest possibly, Ms. Rule, if you don't object, this could go under climate resiliency as an item, possibly, but, or it's a tactic that goes to both goals.
Yeah, it certainly could.
Okay, so let's put a paren at the end. I like that. Goal seven, climate resiliency. And I'm going to say at this point, you now have, I was looking for somewhere between five to ten tactics reached. It's okay, no, this is, it's better to have more than less, okay? It's better to have more, but I'm going to say let's call uncle and move on to the next unless you guys want to keep on this goal.
Mr. Harvey, can you help me with the ending of number ten?
Yes, it's going to be parentheses, climate resilient, goal seven dash climate resiliency, and that's a reminder for me that it could possibly also go there.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Let's move to number two, which is wildfire safety risk mitigation.
One moment, let's get that.
Okay, and I'm going to, just like the last one, sorry, I'm going to bore everybody with me reading this, so yeah, don't make me seasick. Okay, thank you. Okay, number one tactic, contract with Fire Safe Council on resiliency centers. Home hardening assessments and incentive plan recommendations, evacuation plans, hazard mitigation, parentheses, related to land clearing, et cetera. Number two, firewise community implementation strategy, neighborhood by neighborhood throughout the city. Number three, communication strategy, including warning sirens, backup power and internet, mobile teams on ground for communications. Number four, home hardening incentive strategy implementation. Number five, in collaboration with Ventura County, bury power lines, set up microgrid, manage utility lines. Number six, land clearing implementation plan, working with the crew, et cetera. Those are Mayor Gilman's starting point for tactics for wildfire safety risk mitigation. Who'd like to add or modify?
On number one, I don't think we should be calling out a contractor. We should be calling out what, you know, what our goals are, you know, in terms of the work plans that we're looking at.
Okay, so maybe perhaps instead of contract with, you could say.
You could say contract for resiliency centers, home hardening.
Sure.
Assessments and incentives.
So change, so just, Weston, just simply change with Fire Safe Council to four. Okay?
I have a quick question on that. So we did call out help of Ojai. Are we going to not call out any nonprofits? Are we going to be consistent with that? Are we just going to?
And I'm calling out the chamber.
Pick out, pick out the ones we like and pick out and not, not call out them and call out the ones we do like.
I'm not trying to call out friends, I'm trying to call out.
No, I understand that.
Who's in the, who's in the pocket there.
Right, well, I mean, obviously, you know.
I'm fine with removing help of Ojai. I do think they might be the only option on that goal, but I think we can remove them and identify.
You know, I.
Going back to affordability.
There's some wisdom, sorry, I'm going to jump in, like, that's, just going vanilla all the way through might be.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
There might be some other agencies.
So can we, sorry. Can we go back really quick to affordable housing? Is that where the?
Yeah.
Okay, great, so let's just really quickly fix this. There you go. Okay, so number two, Mr. Montgomery, just change it to say annual financial contribution for.
Rental assistance.
And get rid of that. There you go.
And also under number six with Ventura Home.
Yes.
I think that one's run through the government, as I understand it, that's the county area.
No, it definitely is.
But just, we're going, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter if it's the only source, we're just saying that this is what we're doing. We're not going to identify how or who yet.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, collaborate, there you go. Perfect. Okay, this is, okay, I could see the wisdom in doing this. Actually.
Okay, so I have another tactics here.
Okay, so let's wait, hold on, let's finish, let's finish this. Contract for resiliency centers, okay.
Is that a capital R?
No. Okay, sorry, please.
And I guess you have to take out the crew in number six.
Yes, you do.
Yeah, and so.
You could just make it land clearing implementation plan. Perfect, great.
I have to say that I like having the specifics in there because I think it specifies it. I mean, you know, we have talked about supporting our local nonprofits. We've talked about, you know, those agencies that we feel are head and tails above others. Like, I like to see land clearing implementation plan by the crew. That makes me feel better than just land clearing implementation. I just have to say, I see the wisdom, but I think taking out our local nonprofits and putting them with something or nothing.
Hang on, because I'll give you a solution. You can have your cake and eat it too, because we're going to make a work plan that goes with all this, and the work plan will have that type of granularity in it, because it's going to specify, like, so for instance, if you need to enter into an agreement, it will literally say, you know, we're bringing back this agreement to the council on this date, and this is how this tactic is being implemented. So that's how you can have both.
Okay, I got one more on this. Create a yes and no list for plants in our landscape. Like the.
Are you speaking of native, native planting?
Well, I mean, there's certain plants that are just like a serious fire hazard, and there's others that are much more fire resistant. And it's like the, what the Monterey Aquarium has, you know, eat these fish, but not these. We just had a list that was available to homeowners to.
Create a yes and no plant list for, do you want to help me finish sentence, please?
A yes and no list for fire risk.
But related to.
Plants for fire.
Related to landscaping.
Plant list for landscaping?
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody understand that?
Okay, I have some, I have some tactics.
Yeah, cool.
This was, I had fun with this one. Okay, so I would like to, us to have a, to look into a coordinated education plan that reaches people where they are. So for example, I have this whole vision of having like little tables set up with information that we pass out at the grocery stores at Westridge and Vons that we, that we partner with the schools to give kids incentives to be thinking and that we take that firewise community implementation strategy to another level where we get volunteers and we have people sign up. So coordinated communication or education plan there. And then also I'd like for us to have regular drills and training for our city staff, commissions, boards, you know, for us, so that anyone who's working at the city or who could be in Kent Hall when there is a fire knows what to do.
So that's a separate, that's a separate tactic, Mr. Montgomery, so number nine.
Training and drills for.
Emergency response.
Emergency response training for city staff and officials, city staff and officials.
And then one other thing that, a final one is.
Hang on a sec, one second.
Oh, sorry.
Emergency response training for city staff and officials. And I'm going to, sorry, before we go on, I'm going to go back to number eight when you're finished. And let's say coordinate, well, design, develop. Well, design, develop and implement, coordinated education plan. You're looking for the whole kit and caboodle. Okay, design, develop and implement coordinated education plan. Okay.
And then the final one is I would like for us to look at partnerships and grants and partnering with neighboring cities and agencies. So that we're working with Santa Paula, we're working with Ventura.
Explore regional partnerships and grants. That or for, you want to finish the sentence?
For, to share best practices and resources.
Okay.
I have one more, and that is eleven is beyond our limit, but.
I need help with number ten, please.
Okay, explore regional partnerships and grants.
To share best practices and resources, but also like, you know, exit routes and things like that.
Yeah, number five is going to need number ten, P.S. I mean, those are gigantic items, right? So that would be big partnerships and collaboration.
Yeah, so five, put a parenthesis after five, ten and ten, five, please. Let's let Weston catch up here. There we go, great. Okay?
Okay, so I would like to get a report back on what is mandatory already under state or county law for fire hardening measures. You know, I know, you know, one of the, one of the topics that's been talked about is.
So receive report for mandatory fire hardening measures.
Yeah. Two of the big ones there are the five-foot no fuel zone. I have some, when I've talked to people about it, there are, some people will say, oh, that's already exists. I want to know, you know, does it exist and so we can look at what we want to do.
Achievable.
Yeah, and the other one are the the attic screens.
Right, so okay, that's, those are both within eleven. Anything else that people want to change or tweak with this one?
I would like to add with communication, number three, some sort of text messaging notification.
Okay, great, so let's say after internet, Weston, please put, yeah, reverse nine, reverse nine-one-one. Comma.
I bet there'll be a lot of tactics that will, there'll be a lot of methods or media that will fall under number three.
Yeah.
And then under the grants concept that's in ten, I'd want to make sure that included, you know, seeking out grants for just fire hardening.
I think that's inherent.
Is that it?
Well, okay, we can put it in there. So after grants, put parentheses, fire hardening. Right? No dash between them, just put fire hardening. Space, space, yeah, add a space between fire and hard, yeah. There we go, thank you, sorry. Okay, any other tweaks on this one? Okay, I suggest we move on to the third goal.
Yeah.
Ready, Weston? Sorry, just kind of. Okay, arts, culture and recreation funding. I'm going to just read these like I have all the rest. Number one, culture roundtable events to gather information from stakeholders. Number two, Ojai cultural contribution annually one fifteenth of TOT dedicated to nonprofit applicants influencing arts, culture, recreation and triple arts commission grant funding with cost sharing from hotels. That's a mouthful there. Number three, establish parks and recreation commission and task priority for new opportunities slash initiatives focused on families. Number four, extend bike path to Soul Park. Number five, establishing criteria, I think there's a typo there, for legacy organization for Libby Park slash Bull Priority. Number six, partner with Ojai Unified School District on research for performing arts center downtown. Okay.
One small one that I thought about after, which is, there are other nonprofits that would like to partner with the city on nonprofit summits, sharing best practices and things like that, so there could be collaborative nonprofit work with, with other organizations. I don't know what to say.
I think nonprofit.
Nonprofit summits is great.
Nonprofit summit, or, yeah, summits is great.
With, with local partners.
With local, great, okay.
So and then I think this needs to be linked to the fiscal sustainability.
Okay, which, which one? Two?
Well, I, the only one that really talks about maybe, you know, a specific amount of money is two or two.
Right. Do you want to link that to sustainability? Okay, so Weston, a paren afterwards, it's going to say, let me find it again, there it is. Goal eight dash fiscal sustainability, please. Thank you.
Right here.
Okay. All right.
I have a quick question. What is, what is one fifteenth of the TOT roughly?
It's about four hundred, it depends, four hundred thirty-three, four twenty, something like that.
Okay, so four hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I would add.
I'm just throwing it out there.
Hey, no, I just wanted to know a number.
Yep.
Because that doesn't, a fraction doesn't mean anything to me, really.
Okay.
So I would do a capital campaign for a pool at Soul Park. And I'm assuming because of recreation that we're also talking, I think we need to have a dog park here in the city. You know, because people use the parks anyway for their dogs, and it makes other people very unhappy. But the options for letting your dog run free are far and few between, so I think that would be something to consider.
Anything, related to anything you heard in the public comment tonight on this item that you'd like to put in there?
I would like to have something more like, not like an Ojai day, but, you know, we pride ourselves on being an art town and all of that stuff. And really, what do we, you know, do we have one day a year where it's all local Ojai artists? Kind of like, you know, Santa Barbara, the beach walk thing.
Yeah, so let's, I'm going to freestyle this one, councilmembers to help me. Consider.
You know, an Ojai only artist or whatever, you know what I mean?
Sure. Do you want to modify, do you want to embellish Ojai Day, or do you want to have it separate from all that?
I think it should be separate, and then, you know, it could even be done on a, yeah, to have the community.
Great, so consider creation of.
Ojai Art Day.
Art Walk Event.
Ojai Art Walk, let's say that.
Yeah, I think that would be good. You could have the family events. And I don't know, you know, like, I just envision a community mural or a mosaic or something, you know, tapping in, so I don't.
Okay, so number eleven, let's, actually, no, I think this is separate, or is that part of the same thing?
I'm up to putting it wherever, I just think it would be sweet to have, you know, like the mandala you see at Ojai Day, how many people it brings in and the kids, and they look forward to it. Where we had something that was permanent, that wasn't washed away at the end of the day.
So I think you're saying consider, consider creation of an Ojai Art Walk that features a community mural.
Or we could make, a community mural could be somewhere else if there's a new building or something, or hey, we have this building.
Let's make it number eleven, community mural.
Or something, you know what I mean?
Community mural, let's just say that.
That raises something that I've wanted to mention for a long time, and that is potentially getting the art commission to look at, you know, awarding a mural design for these white doors that sit here.
Okay, so number twelve.
Well, we could put it with.
Direct, direct art commission to, help me, councilmember.
Mural for closet doors.
For closet, for council chamber closet door mural.
We could hire an artist to do it.
Okay, well, you know what we're talking about, that's fine, that's good, that's good.
I think make it a competition.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
There you go, right?
You know, let people submit.
Let them, give that to them to figure out.
Let the art commission ask for designs and award to the one that looks most worthy.
You know, in our policy committee meeting last, our last one, we talked about either some new funding available for mural. I can't remember exactly what I heard, but community murals were one of the, one of the talking points, and they're apparently new permitting thing. Anyway, so I'll look into that, I'll look into that and remember what I heard. So I actually had community mural on my list because of that reason. And I would like to add to this. The, hang on one second, I'm trying to remember what. Okay, so I loved number, number two, I love, I love that one. Oh, yes, now I remember. Some members of our community approached me about the idea of having on Sundays or one. Some, uh, members of our community approached me about the idea of having, uh, on Sundays or one, you know, weekend day at Libby, if it makes sense, to have a multi-generational community choir. So kind of like of the blue zone mentality, like multi-generational activities.
Multi-generational activities, including community choir.
Right.
Okay?
Um, and then, uh, and then I would also like to look at, I would like to add on to the performing arts center downtown and see if there's something that we could do like, an all-around arts, so to have a gallery, maybe to even look at having studio spaces for artists to, to co-op, uh, to have a co-op or something like that.
Okay, so new tactic, uh, pursue, uh, art, uh, pursued development that, uh, help me out here.
What about, what if you just said number six is?
Yes.
Partner with O U S D on research for performing slash visual arts center downtown.
Perfect.
So just.
Performing slash visual arts center, number six.
Mm-hmm.
Thank.
Please help me out with that one more time.
So number six, partner with O U S D on research for performing slash visual arts center downtown. Is that good? And then you could delete, um, fourteen. Thank you.
Okay, and hopefully no more tactics on this one, or, or get rid of one if you're gonna add another one.
Are you sure?
Well, I, I had, uh, create a mechanism for feedback, but I, I think that we.
Uh, we have a communication.
Arts Commission.
Okay, yes, exactly.
So, so I do have one, which is, um, and the arts commission has spoken on this, but, you know, fund or sponsor a report on the creative economy in Ojai, so that we can actually get a sense of what half of these might be or might not be.
Okay?
Yeah, and I think I had, I had, I had exactly that for the, for goal, the goal around fiscal.
Yep.
Diversify economy.
Yes, exactly, so, so, yeah.
So we'll put that, um, diversify, uh.
You wanna put that under diversified economy?
It's actually, it's item number three of six, anyway, right there already. Well, I put, Ojai, if you were to scroll down to diversify economy, I was suggesting the Ojai cultural contribution art economy enhancement is pointing to that one, so it's what you just said.
Yeah, so either way you could, um, you know, we're just trying to link the two in some way, like you've been doing by putting.
Cool with moving that to diversify economy?
Not really, because I think it's really specific about the creative economy, and I think that, um, I'd like to keep it there, only because I think that it really, it, it will color and figure out what we do with half of those other ones, I think.
But parenthetically, you could say six.
Yeah, for sure.
Put after it, Weston, please, sorry, um, goal six dash diversifying economy slash tourism management, that's just.
Yeah, I mean, it's all, it, it is certainly aligned in a very, uh, you know, strong way.
Fit in with what the, um, consultant is doing on the general plan.
Not, not a, not a, um, creative economy component, no. But it is something that the arts commission has talked about a lot, and I know that the county, um, has an effort.
Yeah, so it might even be, you know, merging the two or not, that, that could also just be part of the report, the value of doing that.
Okay, anything else for this particular goal, or do you wanna move on to the next? Let's move on to the next, infrastructure maintenance and improvement. Give Mr. Montgomery a minute to bring that up, okay, and I'm gonna read these out loud, sorry, again.
There we go.
Okay, uh, tactic number one, advance road paving timeline. Number two, research road paving demonstration project with alternative materials. Number three, lighted crosswalks in front of the arcade in Montgomery. Number four, parking increase plan, parentheses, several locations to investigate. Uh, number five, water conservation, uh, explore bioswale projects already identified, example given signal and grant. Can I ask a question, Mayor, on number one, exactly, I, I'm assuming you, you mean speed up?
Yeah, so the idea there, it actually would go into fiscal sustainability, and I put it there as well, it's at least investigating the research of advancing the road paving timeline so that you are gonna pay today's prices for what you were gonna do next year and the year following, that would absolutely depend on the research from pla- from Public Works, of course, so if it proved to be viable and save money, great, if not, forget it.
Got it, got it, got it, so it's also, uh, right, so it's, it's expanding the C I P as, as well, so put parentheses, please, Mr. Montgomery, increasing, um, oh, sorry, reducing project timeline and increasing C I P, I think is kinda what we're saying, right, a little bit?
Just research, yep, just finding out.
Reducing, yeah, actually, that's redundant, sorry, sorry, just to say, let's just say, increase, increasing C I P.
Yep.
Capital improvement program.
And then just to, so to avoid confusion, number two is an idea that other cities do, which is a demonstration project in a neighborhood where you use alternative materials with less carbon footprint, only to try cost, durability, resilience, et cetera, only to try. And again, research first, of course.
Understood.
Yep.
So on number three, I've got, uh, ideas that, uh, maybe fit under a couple of.
Yep.
Areas, so, um, I agree, we need to address in the pedestrian interchange through the arcade area. So I'm interested in, um, getting some feedback about how to properly design that so it doesn't become a traffic jam because of pedestrian traffic.
So are you speaking, you're speaking to the, the walkway in the arcade?
The crosswalk that, uh, that is not at a signal. Um, and actually, there's a couple of them, but the main one is the one that goes straight into Libby Park. And that one, that one, you know, just gets a lot of pedestrian that just really clogs up the street. And if it could be timed better, that's what I'm looking at. Is can we, uh, can we get a better time, uh, design for getting people across the street that doesn't interfere with trying to use Ojai Avenue?
Well, I think, okay, so a couple of options here, so you, at great expense and with some challenges, you could have a signal, their signals are timed, it's harder to time a crosswalk, I mean, you, you want that to be available when the person wants to cross, I mean, one option is you, you are, this body is able to remove crosswalks, and, and if you have, you know, we, we would wanna look at that, I mean, you, you, you do have one at the end of the street, you know, so, that's just a thought.
We could look at that, but I have a feeling that if you remove the crosswalk.
Yeah, you have some limitations, because Caltrans is, is, is the owner of this road as well.
I believe Ms. Palmer is looking at some other alternatives, so, I mean, what we could say is, you know, research efficacy, and we know that that's open to decide what's the best strategy.
Okay, so let's change number three to say, you know, research and report back, um.
Pedestrian crossing at Arcade in Montgomery, absolutely.
Do you wanna change that, actually, go back Weston, let's, let's go back to the start of this, number three.
Instead of lighted crosswalks.
Instead of, yeah, let's just, uh, research and report back, uh, regarding.
Pedestrian crossings at Arcade in Montgomery.
Thank you, yes, that's great.
Yep, all for it.
Okay, great.
Should we include that too with, under public safety as well?
I made a little asterisk for myself.
That's where I had it.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, so at the end of that, please put a paren and put goal five dash public safety, close paren.
Yep.
Thank you.
And then as number four, uh, does that contemplate a, a system for park, for?
It certainly can, I was thinking of locations or changing, um, changing blocks where there's no parking now, but again, this would have to be obviously vetted, researched and all that, so that's very open at this point, um, I, I was saying that obviously we could do metering and think about that, but I was thinking.
Parking opportunity and option discussion.
Yep, that's it.
Convene parking opportunity and option discussion.
Yeah. Sounds good.
And then one other thing I have, and I don't know how we wanna fit it in there, but, um, to focus on identifying, um, potential issues before they come a big problem, like a scheduled maintenance, like, you know, you take your car in this often, you change your air filters, all of this stuff, just to keep ahead of what.
So a couple of things on that, you could be speaking of like a city asset maintenance schedule, that could be one thing. Um, you, you also are speaking a little bit to the, the paving plan. Um, but I think it's primarily because of the thing that we're able to influence, uh, our, our public assets, and so we could develop a city asset maintenance, uh, schedule, so that you know, like, so for instance, you know, uh, this building needs a new roof in five more years, and this is what we anticipate it's gonna cost, and just so you know that that's coming, so, okay, number, yeah, city asset maintenance schedule.
I had, so I had something similar of.
Oh, and actually, sorry, real quick, before we, before we lose sight, I wanna put at the end of that parentheses, uh, goal eight dash fiscal sus- sustainability.
Totally agree.
That's linked to that, thank you, sorry.
I, I had the same, I had something similar of prioritization and auditing, so basically like looking at what we have currently, um, and, uh, but it's similar thing.
I, I think that's the same, because you, you're gonna rank the needs, um, those, those are the greatest need, get a higher ranking.
Would, would this also be, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm done. Oh, were you done?
I'm good.
Okay, great. Would this also be where we have, uh, looking at the bike path, like, um, maintenance, bike path maintenance?
And, um, council's aware that the county is currently, uh, redoing the bike path, okay? So, help me with this one.
Um, so they're, they're redoing the paving, is that, so, but not the trees or not the?
They're trimming, they're, they're trimming the canopy, they're paving the bike path. Um, and they're removing in almost all instances the, the rails.
The horse divider.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, now, this is part of an effort, they would like to finish this and then talk to us about taking it over, uh, but that's what they're doing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, then maybe.
We've made no commitments, just so the council knows.
Maybe we can eliminate the, the, that one if we, if it's already in.
Or perhaps that item could be investigate city takeover of bike path.
Right, there you go.
Something to be thought through carefully.
Following, put following county, uh, repaving effort.
Completion of county.
Following completion of county, yeah.
Yep. Let them finish their project before we take anything over.
Yes, for sure.
That could also include, if I could suggest, possible expansion to Seoul Park.
Correct.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Right.
Where was that, remind me?
That's under, um, arts and culture number one, or number two, or number one, rather, or let's see, hold on. That was.
That was number three, arts, culture and recreation funding?
Yes, correct, number, it was big item three. And number four, extend bike path to Seoul Park.
One other tactic that I, I wanted to actually ask your opinion about, or ask if, if this makes sense, but I know, I'm aware that there are, there are state grants and, and who knows about federal grants, but I'm aware that there are state grants available for infrastructure projects. And I'm wondering if we could add as a tactic to, to investigate, uh, hiring a, a grant consultant?
Absolutely. I might suggest that goes under, um, fiscal sustainability.
Yeah.
Absolutely, there's a host of firms out there, we would actually probably have to do an R F Q or an R F P, there's so many, but we could definitely do that.
And Mr. Allen, we do reports, we already have a grant consultant in place?
Right, we, we could.
Expanding that, yeah, the other thing that's in that same tactic can also, I've seen clients have great success with, is special appropriations from the legislature. You need a really shiny project, but if you have a shiny project, you can get additional straight line item state budget allocations.
Cool.
So Weston, on number seven, can you do like a hyphen at the end of improvements and say, extend to Seoul, question mark?
Well, that's our goal, three arts, culture and recreation funding is the extension to Seoul Park.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so we're, we're tying into that one, so. Okay, anything else to add on infrastructure? Let's move on to, um, I should've lost my place, sorry, five, public safety. Okay, so I'm gonna read these aloud. Uh, public safety, number one, twenty-five mile per hour, miles per hour citywide speed limit. Number two, research and establish e-bike policy. Number three, identify speed hump trials on problem streets, example given drown between Maine and Grand. Number four, sponsor e-bike education programs with O U S D, um, private schools. Number five, evaluate sheriff contract in detail for next year's budget, I'm gonna suggest that probably is gonna go under fiscal sustainability. So on that last one, could you please just put, um, no, no, keep it there, just put, um, goal eight dash fiscal sustainability.
If I could, I would add a number six, I, what I failed to send to you was, um, research firework drone displays or Fourth of July drone displays might go here.
Okay.
Just research.
So put research, Weston, please, research potential, uh, Fourth of July drone show.
I mean, it goes under, it's a tactic for many items, but.
And the council, and the public will get to comment on this once the council finishes, then we'll return it back to the council.
Yep.
I just have to say, it makes me laugh, um, like tomato, tomato, is it speed hump or bump?
Well, there's a, there's a technical, the hump is, the hump is more gradual.
Okay.
I know, I know, and it's a, the bumps, nobody wants bumps, but they're okay with the humps, so I, I, bump, whatever, whatever's deemed by the engineers to be the best.
And the, and the speed cushion is even smaller, that's what we have on drown right now.
Is what we want.
Well, no, 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 well, we, what I wanna do is research these, um, engineering strategies for problem streets, of which many of us have probably heard from our constituents, so whatever the solution is, I don't know what it is, but.
So number three, let's change that to say, research and identify, uh, strategies.
Engineering strategies or something.
Speed reduction strategies, let's say that, research and.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I know, I know, no, 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 I know, you're like, so I, I know, people joke about it.
Okay.
Is that Rita?
So.
Yep.
Yeah, there's kind of a corollary to that, and it's been a big issue for different neighborhoods. Not sure exactly what to say about this, but it's, it's the idea of figuring out, how do we get people from using a residential street as an arterial street? Yep, you know, so.
Well, so I can, I can help you with that, so that's gonna be a traffic calming measure generally, uh, so for instance, yeah, you might have, and this is a bad example, but sometimes you have a, a two lane street, you narrow it to, to one lane, that's a traffic calming measure, you can, if you shrink the size of the, of the street, uh, the, the speed limit goes down correspondingly, um, and that is how you keep people, that's, so that's, that's when a, a street that's acting like an arterial suddenly becomes. You, you increase the median, yeah.
The number one, I think is Cuyama.
Cuyama de Del Norte.
I'm familiar.
To, to the, to the Presbyterian church.
Absolutely.
That is, that is being used as a freeway by certain people.
So let's say traffic calming measures for, um, uh, specified streets, cause you might have, you're, you're gonna have more than just Cuyama.
And I don't, I, you know, I don't drive Creek Road, but I've heard Creek Road is one of those places.
But for alternative art, our alternative arteries is, I think what Mr. Whitman's getting at, um, it's ways where people avoid downtown, but you have streets that have more, more traffic.
You know, we, we have maybe two arterial streets, which is the, which is Ojai Avenue and Grand, so part of it would be, you know, a strategy for getting more of the pass-through traffic to use Ojai and Grand.
So you're, you're kinda hitting this a couple of ways, you've got twenty-five miles per hour, right, you're, you're looking at traffic calming, and, you know, you also, you're not doing it now, but you are gonna have a motorcycle officer to help you with all that too, so those three things will, will probably work together.
What I sent to you and Ms. Palmer, that's, that, that's the exact, Mr. Harvey, that one piece that I was suggesting, this piece needs to be paved and didn't finish, that's exactly this issue.
Got it, okay, understood, understood.
I like what seven says now.
Yeah, okay, great.
Cool.
I, I wanna, I wanna add revisiting the, uh, the stop signs on drown and Grand.
Okay.
Lots of comments about that, and, and as a regular user of those stop signs, it's very confusing.
Okay.
Um, let's see, uh, uh, then, the other thing too is, I would love for us to do just, uh, well, I think we've already done it, but I wanna make sure that our, that our crosswalks are as, are as accessible as possible. And so maybe just doing an audit and seeing.
Okay.
Seeing.
I like that, that was better than where we started, I was worried about that.
Doing an audit with someone who is a wheelchair user or, you know.
Crosswalk accessibility audit.
I just got that complaint last night, that, that, that we have certain obvious places for qua- crosswalks that don't, that don't have.
So, should, you want a crosswalk A D A accessibility?
Exactly, thank you.
Okay, great, we can, you can add A D A in front of accessibility, right, thank you.
And I, I would say also just, you know, adding the number of places where we have crosswalks. Someone, someone was telling me.
Increasing the number of crosswalks?
Yeah, someone was telling me that you can't walk from, uh, you know, say, the.
Okay, so let's go back to number nine, Weston, in parentheses, put, go back to number nine, if you would.
Add crosswalks.
Including potentially adding additional crosswalks. Including potentially adding additional crosswalks.
So, uh, the comment was that if you walk from, um, the old, um, Locker Market, now Westridge, you know, to downtown, uh, you're not gonna have protected crosswalks for most of those.
Until fox.
Streets coming through.
You, you just, uh, jogged my memory about something else I wanted to add to this too, and that is looking at lighting for, so we have the Cabrillo project coming up. We have Habitat for Humanity, but Cabrillo in particular, that, the Bryant, uh, area, looking at, uh, street safety.
Okay, so on this one, I get this all the time. So you're gonna, we wanna strike a balance here, right? Because you're gonna have to, you're, you're looking to, to potentially increase public lighting, but you also have a dark sky policy, right? So it's gonna.
Right, right. Okay, I.
You can do it. We, we could come back and say, here's some methods, you know, right?
I think we're, I mean, we're, in the future, year, a few years down, a couple of years down the road, we're going to need, we're going to need bus benches, we're gonna need, uh, you know, trolley stops, we're, we're going to need some infrastructure there that we don't have right now, and there will be more foot traffic, so I think.
And that's to that location, I wonder like a traffic signal, because if you're gonna have children in a place to go to school.
Those are, those are conditions that come along with development usually, and I'd have to go back and look at that.
Okay.
Because I, we, we, in general, when you are increasing the amount of, of housing in a location, those are entitlement conditions that go with it. You have to, you have to bring, you know, the sidewalks up to, to ADA compliance, and with that comes a whole host of, I don't know if you need to do that, but maybe if you're, you're talking about maybe, do you wanna go back to the lighting concept, or do you wanna go talk about bus benches and that type of thing?
Well, I think, you know, maybe that is something that we reserve for when we're, when we're in, closer in, in talks with the, with the permitting process or with the development.
Cabrillo was already permitted. The solution here, I think, is something like pedestrian safety improvements assessment for Bryant Street.
I think that's it.
Perfect. Thank you, man. That's it.
We can fund and what makes sense, balancing those different interests.
This came up in that Cabrillo approval, when you guys were talking about it.
Yeah, took the words out of my mouth. Thank you.
Nice job. Okay, let's.
Help me out with that one again, Mr. Weston.
Pedestrian safety improvements assessment for Bryant. Street and circle.
Yep. Assessment for Bryant Street and Circle.
Yep.
Great. Okay, anything additional now before I move to the next goal? Hold on.
Could do the microphone there, Leslie, please.
I, I research speed reduction strategies on problem streets. I just wanna put speed cushions on every street that's directly between Ojai Ave and Grand, because they're all arterial, except for maybe Drown, because it has that tree in the middle.
How about, how about embellishing seven, maybe at the end with a paren that just says especially, what you just said, especially, what were the streets? You said Grand and.
Between Grand and.
Especially between.
Between Grand and Ojai Ave, yeah.
Especially between Grand.
And Ojai Ave.
Get rid of streets and just say especially, well, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, because, you know, basically from.
Sure.
Yeah, I guess it'll probably be, probably Montgomery over to Park.
Sure.
They're just.
Yeah. Does that make sense what we have there?
And, and we have kids everywhere.
Yes, we do.
Parents would, you know, I know people might not like a bit, or put those little men out there with signs.
We'll do the tactics. We'll figure out the tactics. I like it. Okay, Councilor Meng, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just have, I don't know with like a crosswalk or whatever, um, I'm thinking right there by Villanova, because with those children like coming into town on, it's so dangerous to cross over to get, and I know a lot of them now have e-bikes and all of that.
Where's the city end though?
That's what I don't know.
The city ends at Villanova where it goes to, where the school ends and it turns to Villanova.
It doesn't mean we can't work with Caltrans, um, on that, but first, before we get there, sorry, three and seven, or can you guys help me? I think they're.
I think three and seven are the, because I'm not, I'm saying on number three, whatever the solutions end up being, so seven would be a subset of three.
Can we remove three and go with seven? Or is there a part of three that we need to bring down to seven?
Three can be replaced with seven, that's fine.
Okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do it. I see them as the same.
Okay, now back to Councilor Meng's comment about, um, Villanova. Uh, okay, so we partner with Caltrans, uh, for, um, safety solutions at, uh, what is that, Highway thirty-three and? In Villanova Road?
That's a tough one.
Right?
I mean, it's gonna be tough to figure out what to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go through there all the time. I know what you mean. Yep.
And we probably should add the county there too.
Yep. Partner with Caltrans, yeah, go back Weston, Caltrans and the county.
I think we're at an hour.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we have to, we have to, um, final question on this one, um, public safety, so almost everything that we're talking about has to do with other, has to do with cars, right? I mean, i- it's all a result of cars and people driving irresponsibly or us not having the proper, um, mechanisms by which to control them. So should there be some sort of statement around getting, getting people out of their cars and into bikes, for instance, whether or not it's having a loner bike, you know, terminal or, you know, scooter or, you know, those kinds of things.
Explore transportation.
Options.
Explore transportation options, including bike share program.
To, to reduce, explore, explore transportation items to reduce car usage, and then including, you know, share programs, which would be bike and, you know, all the different kinds of shares that you can do.
Bike, yeah, yeah, including, just say, including.
Or trolley, yeah.
Great.
Counsel, just a quick question procedurally. So we're, you're at number five, you have four more goals to go. You could just say, we wanna stop for tonight, we'll pick this up.
Let's do, let's do.
All right, yeah.
Again, anyway.
And so we're, we're not gonna mess with these tactics. We're just gonna come back to you and, and pick up and continue. So we will send this out to you all, and we'll make the public aware of this as well, so everybody can see it, but then we're just gonna pick up, and it'll probably be at an April meeting, either the first or the second in April, that we will continue this. But you still need to take public comments.
I'm gonna take public comments right now. Mr. Bill Miley, and then Star Child, and then Souza Francina.
Hello.
Hello.
I certainly support the idea of a swimming pool at Soul Park. I support the idea of looking for more city parking in the area of Ojai Avenue, Signal, and Ventura. I like the idea of a separate, all event for Ojai Art Walk. I like the idea of a performing visual arts center downtown. I like the idea of a study on the art economy. On affordable housing, the current cycle six housing element has numerous suggestions for affordable housing tactics. There are suggestions therefore aiding older houses to become more efficient with insulation. The Housing Element document has clear data showing how rent burden is impacting close to forty percent of Ojai residents or renters, close to five hundred families. Under arts, culture, and recreation, recognize the cultural value of visual and performance art by increasing the art commission's ability toward not thirty, but ninety thousand dollars worth of grants. Consider the recognition and recognizing the significant idea of creating a central arts center for both visual and performing arts. Mark Whitman had this idea. This is not to preempt the Ojai Arts Center, but to enhance their performance work and their visual efforts. Support the Ojai studio artists in ways I'm unaware of. I looked at their website, it's great. Under communications, consider auto-recording closed sessions. It would be helpful for the city to ask public presenters like me to summarize their three minutes with three to five key points. Uh, I'm running out of time here. I had a six-page email that I sent you. Conduct an annual survey of residents for needs, choices, what they find missing in the city, connecting an annual or ongoing survey of tourists, conduct a survey of business locally, asking them what the city does that's good and what the city does is bad. And twenty-five miles an hour. We should consider local location technology in our parking lots, so people can find it as they drive in empty spaces.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Star Child, Souza Francina, and then Anita Cram, please.
I want to echo what Mr. Miley said about recording closed session meetings. That's important for transparency, and it should be done as quickly as possible. Regarding public safety, um, I disagree with what the city manager said, that there may be a conflict between our dark sky ordinance and brightening intersections. I think that it's the job of the city to figure out how to do both. And if for some reason there is a conflict and we can't have both, the city should prioritize safety in our intersections and make them bright and safe. The most important topic for this council, and the one that I'm most interested in talking about, is affordable housing. I'm happy to see the proposal to have a housing commission. I think that commission should be a Brownac Commission, the same as we have Planning Commission or Historical Commission. One thing that I saw, uh, was the city's interest in, uh, subsidizing rent through help of Ojai. The way that it was put on the, uh, in the list of items, it made it sound like this would be a new program. But in the Ojai Housing Element, it says that this city provides money to help of Ojai for the Community Assistance Program. My review of the warrants from since when the Housing Element was established shows that there has not been a significant amount of money paid by this city to help of Ojai for the Community Assistance Program. And my question to the city manager and to the city is, how much money have we spent on the Community Assistance Program since twenty twenty-one? And will the city commit to paying money that hasn't been spent yet to back pay that money? Um, as we spend more on subsidizing rental for low-income renters? Another important element that we didn't talk about was stability. We have a rent stabilization ordinance in Ojai. It helps renters with an amount of money paid by the landlord if they are evicted through no fault of their own. But it exempts landlords who are, who have less than a certain amount of properties, who are natural persons instead of corporations. But it doesn't really matter to the renters who were evicted through no fault of their own, whether they rented from a corporation or from a small landlord. They need money to move just the same, and they should also receive a benefit under the housing rental stabilization ordinance.
Thank you, Star Child. Souza Francina, and then Anita Cram.
So it's times like this that I wish I was still on the council, but I, I think you're doing a fabulous job. I really like how this is structured. I think it's better than that star thing that we had. Remember, the stars? So, um, I, what I, what I, what I wanna keep as the overarching goal of all of these goals is that your goal is what is known as a sustainable city, which includes, which if you start to, uh, lose sight, but that, that shows how everything is connected. You cannot, uh, climate change is absolutely connected to every single one of these goals. And I want to encourage you, if you're not already a member of the Strong Towns organization, you do not have to reinvent the wheel. One of the, they have all kinds of, of articles that, you know, actually have been put forth for years, but you're a more progressive council, I hope. So one of the best ways you can build more housing is to waive parking requirements. You can have subcar, you know, for people that are commuting, but everybody in the housing developer doesn't need two cars. And they have like all the, you don't have to reinvent it. Cities are doing this. There are very successful car-free housing developments al- already, especially since we have a large, uh, retired population. And now if you look, the e-bikes with three, what do you call it, like a trike? E-bike, they're getting so popular. And as far as, um, I, I'm just gonna ramble a little bit, because I'm a wealth of information on housing evictions and, and vouchers, and why they work, house, house sharing. So I'll skip over that, I'll just run editorial. But, um, what I wanna say is, uh, okay, I'm just gonna go down, down my, my list, okay? Uh, as far as wildfire safety, I like Michelle Panero's idea that when the, you know, electricity fails, you're gonna need what they call bullhorns. You should have a, a lot of those so that people don't have to go knocking on door, doors all the time. Uh, the bike park, the dog park, oh, for, for recreation, consider a bike park for the kids. That's always, you know, most of these have been discussed for twenty years. Hope you can get it done. And then, uh, as far as the infrastructure, don't forget your benches. People will walk more. I've been asking for years. It's not expensive. You can build them artistically, so they can't be vandalized. There's all kinds of ways you can build them. If you do start talking about building a parking lot, which I'm not in favor of, but I am in favor of a park, a parking lot, if you get rid of the parking at least between the arcade and the park. Don't increase the parking.
Thank you, Ms. Francina.
Could, could I make just one comment that I thought, um, uh, Ms. Francina pointed out well, which was that, um, there are, a lot of these tactics have been studied by experts, and I would say, as I've heard tonight, the Fire Safe Council, the Housing Element, um, part of that is always the ways that you, uh, go for affordable housing and also strong cities. So sometimes I feel like we are reinventing the wheel, but maybe we should also look at those, uh, and cross-reference anything that we might have.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Cram?
Yeah, so just a few comments, and thank you. It's all looking really good there. Um, on goal number one, uh, I think it would be very helpful for the community if you really had a good definition of what affordable slash workforce housing actually is. And, uh, Councilmember Whitman kinda hit on this with some of the lower income, but I think that's really important. Um, goal number two, on new building, it, I think it would be really cool if we had some recommendations, incentives for fire-resistant materials such as Cobb, Adobe, and, um, just maybe really trying to bring that forward, as has been mentioned before, up at Ojai Foundation, the Cobb buildings were the ones that survived Thomas Fire. Adobe houses survived, um, and also really prioritizing native planting. And, and along with that, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about oak trees and how fire-hardy they are, and trying to get insurance companies to recognize this. And that seems like that was, would be something that should fit under a collaboration with other communities of really trying to compile, you know, I don't know the answer, but it could also be a research project for a university student to go in there and pull the information together. Um, and then on goal number three, um, something with rainwater recapture and perhaps even gray water usage, trying to really forge ahead and make some progress with that. And especially where the county is kind of reluctant on some of that, um, or at least used to be. I don't know if they still are. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Montgomery, anybody online?
Yes, Mayor, we have our first raised hand from Larry. Larry, you have the floor.
God, I think it's funny. It's great. Have a nice day, Kim. I think it's wonderful. Also, Rachel, that's great. I think you're all doing a wonderful job with the, uh, tactics and the strategy and the priorities. Um, I think you might wanna look at. I think you might want to look at which ones cost the city money and which ones don't. So you can actually get things done quicker with the ones that don't, because then you can just apply them and go. But like Ms. Rule mentioned, this, all these things have been studied for 20 years. What is, what is going to be on the agenda in two weeks that you can actually do? Mr. Whitman touched on ember screens and five-foot radiuses. I mean, there are simple things that you can just do and just put on the books and get done. Rather than study it and agendize it and talk about it and discuss it and have committees. That which ones can you do tomorrow, next week, next month, in two months? But keep it up. You're doing a great job on this and let's hope nothing has to unfortunately jump the line because of an emergency or crisis. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dangle.
Mayor, that's the last raised hand.
Okay. Do we need a five-minute break? We want to keep going. We need a five-minute break. We'll be back in seven. Okay. Going to come back into session, everyone? Check one, two. All right, we are on to item number four, adopt a resolution approving the employment agreement for interim finance director. Mr. Harvey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you know, we alluded to this item earlier in the evening when we introduced Ms. Kristi Billings to you. As mentioned, Ms. Billings is a retired CalPERS annuiton, meaning that she is jumping in to assist us in our need for a finance director, but is only in a temporary capacity. She is limited by CalPERS regulations as to the number of hours that she may work in a, in a year. She's also limited as to how she may be brought on board. And so this is the official CalPERS way that you do this. Again, just to address concerns during public comment, we will be doing a public and open recruitment. However, we have very real needs to address immediately in the Finance Department, including obviously the budget that's, that's coming up. You know, day-to-day operations, including accounts payable and payroll, et cetera, et cetera. So if you don't have any additional questions, this is a resolution I'm asking you to adopt, and that's the end of my report. Thank you.
I move to approve the employment agreement for Kristi Billings as, as operative. Oh, go ahead.
Couple of questions.
No, go.
I was just curious, being she's new, have we, I know we're in the audit process. We're a little behind schedule. It usually happens in January and now we're in March. Is there something in place? I'm not like accusing or saying anything, just to be transparent, like is an audit in place? So as she's taking over the books and all of that, just to, I just think it's smart business.
So we have an entire list of issues that need to be addressed within the Finance Department that a third party has, has developed and, and we've gone through those with her. And so she has a roadmap, if you will, of all the things that need to happen. As far as speeding up the audit because we're behind schedule, that's probably not something that she's going to be able to handle immediately because of all the other items, but it's on our radar. Yes, thank you. Oh, and obviously you need public comment on this too.
I didn't mean, oh, and I, boy, I'm just like, let's do, I don't have any cards, but anybody online, Mr. Montgomery?
Mayor, no raised hands on Zoom.
All right. But I didn't mean to cut off discussion. Any discussion, please?
I'm ready to second the motion.
Awesome. Are we ready for a vote?
Yeah. Roll call. Councilmember May.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good.
Cool. Item number five, pickleball 90-day update.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'd like to bring Ms. Rivera up to the dais to deliver this report on behalf of the city. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening. Good to see you. Good to see you too. So I am here to present the 90-day update and return for pickleball. We've done a few things in the past three months, which are written out in this report. This will show you the successes and the challenges that we have faced during this time. Would you like me to go down the list? Okay. So first off would be every morning, the pickleball courts are cleaned by our Public Works crew. We have installed a broom holder or cleaning supply holder out on the courts along with the brooms and everything that we need. We have asked that all non-city-owned items have been removed from the courts, just like other parks, because there were a lot of equipment out there. We looked into the automatic locks for the courts. Unfortunately, it was very expensive and would require a lot of construction. And also we still have openings on all sides of the courts. So we'll, we'll look into that in the future if there's any other options. We are changing the signs out within hours. They aren't going to be bigger. I did see a response regarding that, but they'll be the same size. And we also did list the, or put up the blue list for the recommended pickleball paddle usage. I did also hear, they said, do the paddles have to be blue in this blue list? No. So if you drive by there and you see somebody using a black paddle or a white paddle, it could still be part of the blue list. Let's see what else. Oh, yes. So just very recently, we did install the new courts at Soul Park. Also there have been courts at Lake Casitas, which has lowered the use here at City Hall. Sound wall is still being looked into with possible other options in the future.
Thank you. And again, this is just a council directive to bring this back for an update. We're willing to take obviously any additional questions you have from council now, or you certainly can go to public comment and we can answer questions from there. Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. So were we able to come up with a cost for the sound wall?
No, we, we do not. This would be part of the proposed CIP effort. Candidly, I do have some concerns about the sound wall as far as its effectiveness. There won't be a roof on it. That's the problem. But we could certainly, you know, as part of the CIP discussion, we're, we're planning on having that on the list and council can provide us direction there.
Okay. And do, at this point, do we have authority to specify what equipment can be used by pickleball?
Council, council direction provided previously was recommended, recommended equipment. It was not direction and we do not have, at least now, the staffing in place to, to monitor at that level of council. I would say it's not this item tonight, but if council wants to come back at a future date to provide that direction, we can do it. But right now it's recommended and that was the direction provided.
Right. So I guess what I'm asking is, if we chose to, can we mandate what equipment is allowed?
I, I believe so. I mean, but the city attorney would have to weigh in on that.
Yeah, we'll review closely with the language of the initiative, but generally the council can set reasonable operational limits provided it's not closing the facility. But as noted, enforcement of that does get challenging.
Any other questions for staff? I will say my own question, this is anecdotal, but I'm checking with you on this. My anecdotal experience from being at City Hall twice a week is that I've only seen the courts occupied 100% once. So is that your general assessment?
Yes. And when staff does go there, we were locking the courts and going there every single day for like 45 days, seven days a week. And every time staff went, it was, it was really easy to just shut the courts.
You're going there seven days a week, did you say?
We were in the very beginning. Yeah.
Yeah. I, I had asked the city manager to potentially put cameras there and also decibel readers so that we could actually have some facts as to, you know, I, I understand the problems with decibel readers, but at least it's a data point. And, you know, I, I think if, if it comes to questions, I think we should have data as to who's using it, how often it's being used, because in my experience as, which is the same as Mayor Gilman's, there's been a precipitous drop in the usage of the courts with Soul. So I think that's something sort of to recognize as well.
And I just would add, if council wants to do that, that's fine. It's part of the CIP discussion. We could, we could do that and it's council direction.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
When will the CIP discussion be? Is there?
I was just looking at the working agenda. I think it's April or May. Mr. Almeida, do you recall? Last meeting in April, fourth Tuesday.
I will go to public comments unless there's more questions for staff. Okay, I have Bill Miley and then Casey Abbott.
Hello.
Hello.
Has there been any collection of data showing how these courts have been used? Good point. City-wise, no. Neighborhood-wise, yes. Pickleball hit pops are still heard by neighbors. neighbors. Do they violate the noise, city noise ordinance? Don't know. But do they violate the section of the noise ordinance that precedes the technical numbers? And I sent you copies, screenshots of that part of the noise ordinance, and it says, General Noise Regulation A, it is unlawful for any person to make or permit to be made any noise which unreasonably disturbs the peace and quiet of any neighborhood. That's very important. Then there's a list of factors, which, 10 of them, which can be used to determine whether that's happening. The intent of the noise ordinance definitely, in my opinion, is being violated. The pickleball play hit continues to be heard outside and inside the nearby home. Ask the residents and read the current email. It's on the website. The rule that a city enforcement officer shall stand 50 feet from a noise source for violation determination will easily validate the excessive noise. I don't think that's been done. The November ballot Measure O, which passed by 23 votes, is irrelevant to the ground-level experience evidence reported and can be reported by neighbors. They can hear the pop when play happens. The violation of the city ordinance mission should be nominated. The pickleball play at the court violates the mission statement. How much? We don't know. It should be measured. And a recording decibel meter can do that. They have them such that they will last a whole week on their battery. As I see the issue, citizens are able to evidence excessive unreasonable noise inside and outside their houses, and that clearly speaks to the mission statement here. If you're not going to measure it, then I believe the city act on the mission statement. But I think the idea of measuring is really important. And then where are the larger signs, the lock gates, and the new sound barriers? There are problems.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Casey Abbott.
Good evening. I'm here at the City Hall campus several days a week. When I do hear the pickleball players there, I can hear them. I can hear them as far away as the Mormon church on Bristol. Mostly the voice is more so than the clack of the ball and the paddles. But when you're here on the campus, you can hear the clack of the ball and the paddles. It has not gone down. It really needs a sound wall. A temporary experiment of just bamboo poles and maybe balloons of plastic of some kind might reflect some of it. It could be filled with packing peanuts even. It would have a heck of a large sounding effect. It'd be fairly inexpensive experiment to try. Be worth trying if it were at least indoors without a roof. It would be very, very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abbott. And then I have Brenda Kraut.
I really wasn't planning on speaking because I was assured that this was just going to be a review, that it wasn't going to be a discussion again about how to get rid of the pickleball people at this park. Mr. Whitman seems to be bent on doing that especially. It seems like that the whole concept of the fact that Measure O passed, and if Measure O had failed, we wouldn't even be here talking. You wouldn't even want to listen to us again. We'd be, we wouldn't be up here saying that we should be playing there if Measure O did not pass. But Measure O passed, but you continue to ignore that because we're here discussing it again. You're opening up for discussion. You're opening up to, to point out things that are not true. I mean, Kristi had a report that outlined some of it, but she's not here every day. The, the staff isn't here. I mean, Mr. Gilman's saying that he was here two or three times a week is probably more than, than the majority of you are here. The, the play here has gone down, just like Councilmember Rule pointed out. It has gone down tremendously because we have other options. We, we had said that for a long time in front of this council. We need more courts. We need more options. We were overcrowded there. Yes, it was a lot noisier. There was a lot more people. We had, the courts were completely full all the time that they were open, and there were people waiting. There was 20 more people waiting. That isn't happening now. I mean, there's people there usually normally, in my experience, around 8:30, 9 o'clock, the play starts, and all of those people are gone before noon. You get there 11 or 11:30, and those courts will be empty. So, I mean, even the fact that we have these, these time regulations, which is totally different than any other city park or Soul Park, which isn't a city park actually, that's dawn to dusk. I mean, we are still, we, we gave those concessions because we wanted to, to show that we wanted to cooperate with people, and we wanted to cooperate with all of you. But all of you continue to want to drag us through the mud on this and not just say, okay, that's over. That's an issue that's over. So, I mean, how long are we going to keep doing this? So we're going to talk about this in another 90 days, too, so that we can give people the opportunity to stand up here.
Ms. Kraut, let me just clarify. I requested this to get a report out, and for us to ask questions of the staff is very normal. So what happened here is not what, it's what I expected. In other words, hear public comment and ask questions. So, in other words, it's to hear from the staff, how have things been going this next 90 days, which I want to ask on everything that we do. So it's just part of, for me, what I hope is going to be a standard course for new things. Just so, just to clarify. Okay, anything online?
Yes, Mayor, we have one raised hand from Renee.
Okay.
Renee, you have the floor.
Good evening, Council. I just want to give a positive shout-out to the city and Lindy Palmer for bringing new courts on board that I think have significantly shifted the number of people and the options that are available. Also, the Lake Casitas courts have come on board, and I know from my past experience, I was able to go play at the courts at City Hall, and there were maybe two courts being used. It was easy to get on, and it was hard to find partners and other people to play with. So I would say that definitely the number of demand and the noise level have significantly dropped because there's much less people trying to play there. Everybody was crammed on those courts for excessive usage because there weren't little options, and I think more options are better. I want to commend the city for taking action and getting those courts done and having a great place to play that doesn't have limited hours, that is a reasonable place for us to do. It would be nice if we had the bike path open, and we could also get some exercise on the way out and the way back. So anyway, I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Rata.
No more raised hands, Mayor.
Thank you. So we'll close the public comment, and there's no action to be taken.
I just have one question. You said that you made a new sign with, or a sign change with new hours?
Mm-hmm.
The hours that we spent.
From the meeting, okay.
Yes.
And then just one more question. I was talking with people, and they said in the past that the city purchased, like, paddles and stuff. Is that still available to people to come?
No. I don't think the city has ever purchased paddles.
No, so that wasn't, no?
I think that was the pickleball.
Okay. All right. Thank you for clarification.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for being here, Ms. Rivera. Appreciate it. Okay, we are on to number six, Repealing and Replacing the City's Boards, Committees, and Commissions Handbook.
Yes, Mayor, and I'm just going to give a brief staff report here with the city attorney, our assistant city attorney, who helped put this together. Unfortunately, is ill this evening, so hopefully Ms. Anderson feels better soon. We have before you a proposed Boards and Commission Handbook. It is a replace item. You had a Boards and Commission Handbook previously. We did not do a revise effort. We instead chose to replace the whole document. So we do not have a red-line version. This is a wholesale replacement. Why? There were, it was, it was a comprehensive rewrite that we were looking at doing, and it just was a cleaner and simpler exercise just to replace it with something new. This is intended to be a rules of the road, if you will, for your sitting commissioners, so that they know what their responsibilities are, you know, what, what, what they should do in this, this situation or that situation. Just a one-stop shop, if you will, as a reference guide. We are going to be meeting with all boards and commissioners that are available on the, I think it's the 18th of March. Council is certainly welcome to join that as well. It'll be a public meeting. Other interested parties could be there, I believe.
Yeah, it's a public training session.
Yes, yes. So we're going to be not only going through everybody's favorite, the Brown Act, but we'll also be covering this book in its entirety. So rather than going through all of the items in the Boards and Commission Handbook, I'd prefer to take questions from council if you have any, but I don't know if the city attorney wants to add anything.
Yeah, two quick items. One, there are two training options. One is the evening option, which is Tuesday, March 18, 6:00 p.m. here, and then the next day, Wednesday, March 19, 10:00 a.m. here, is the morning option. So it's one night, one morning.
Yes, thank you for that. And all sitting commissioners, and I believe the council members, too, received an invitation, a calendar invitation, from Mr. Weston Montgomery. So if you want to dig into your email and find that, you can click on that and add that to your calendar. That has been sent out some time ago. So with that, that's the end of our report. We'll take council questions, obviously. Thank you.
Please.
I have just one quick question. Has this been shared with the department, like the chairs of each commission, for their input?
No. This, this, where this handbook came from, this was a handbook that I helped put together in my prior city. So I, I've used it. I've seen it in action. I know, it's been modified to comply with what OHI does and OHI's commissions, but basically I, it's a tool I've used before. I did not consult the sitting chairs on this.
You think that would be, I think that would be a good step, just my two cents.
Well, and that's why we're meeting with all the, all the, so the, the...
And so you'll go over the handbook?
Right. So the sequence is council makes any changes that council wants to make to it, you adopt it, and then we go through it and explain it to the commissioners as to what's in there and answer their questions.
Ms. Lang? Oh, do you have any questions? Oh, no, okay. My, my questions are, they were particular to basically activities around commissions, so I don't, like, the, the book is completely fine, as far as I could tell. There are little tiny questions here and there, but I think that would be a different conversation. Let me use a very easy example. That's almost benign. It's, in the Arts Commission, they had an issue where they had copyrighted material during the meeting that then got pulled off YouTube. I see that it's here. So then my question is just something like, how is that being addressed, you know, in, within the commission? They're minor things, almost commission, intra-commission questions, I guess. Does that make sense what I'm asking?
So the thought is, we're trying to encapsulate in one area.
I get it.
Right. So if there are things that have come up, they're specific to a commission. But actually, that could apply to every single commission.
Of course.
It happens to apply more to the Arts Commission, but that's why it found its way in here. So the thought is, you know, the council adopts this, we provide a training, answer questions from the chair and members of the commissions that have them, and move forward.
And just to add to that, on that exact example, the policy is noted, provides a process by which, with appropriate advance notice, an opportunity to confirm the applicable copyright law, a pathway could be done to play certain kinds of materials if fair use applies. So the idea is to solve the problem by having a clear policy in advance.
Understood. Any questions?
Yeah, so in my experience over the last two years, I think that there's some not-strong understanding of where authority goes. And is that going to be part of this training program, you know, in terms of, okay, if you have this issue, I'm not sure what it is, but bring it to the chair, and then the chair can bring it to the city manager or...
Right. And so what we, what you'll see in the handbook is, we're really trying to invest in our staff liaison. Staff liaison is the primary point of contact with the city for each commission. All questions should really start with staff liaison. It is up to the staff liaison to determine, most questions we receive are not legal in nature, and so often we get a lot of questions that are going directly to the city attorney's office, which are not appropriate. They're often procedural, and usually, most times, the staff liaison or me am able to answer the question. So we just one-stop shopping, go to your staff liaison. If, you know, if that person can't answer the question, then they know to come to me or the city attorney to get the answer.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Whitman?
That was it.
Okay. Then we'll go to public comments. I have Brian Akins.
Hello, Brian Akins. I'm a member of the Historic Preservation Commission for 10 years now. I grabbed a card because, let's see, we were given the option to attend one of two Brown Act training. There was no guidance on when there was going to be a need for commissioners to be in attendance at one of those, and so I'm just a little bit surprised at that, because I think it was option, optional on us on which, which one to attend, and we didn't have to let Weston know ahead of time that we were going to be in attendance. So that was new information to me.
Certainly, it's optional. It's, we can't require your attendance. If I could just jump in, Mayor, and answer the question. I'm sorry if the, if the invitation was not clear, but, you know, we would like all commissioners to be in attendance. It's not required.
Yeah, that wasn't my, my, my comment. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes, it's an invitation. I plan, I plan on attending those. I just have a step-grandmother who's turning 100 that afternoon.
You have a conflict.
That, that I'm racing from the Manhattan and Camarillo to ours. Fortunately, I won't have to break any speed limits. I, my only thing was, when the invitation was given out, it was for us to attend one or the other, but it didn't give us any kind of guidance on what you're saying to attend on the 18th, because that's where the...
I think we can work, except, we can, there's two, there's two different trainings. There's one at night.
Right.
And there's one the next day. And if you can't make either one, we will, I'm sure there might be some other...
Yeah, I'm still, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Akins, is your concern that you, the, were you under the impression that you had to preregister for one or the other?
Absolutely not.
Okay. What is your concern?
My concern was, I didn't know that there was something else that was being introduced. I thought it was just the Brown Act.
Ah, so it's Brown Act and Boards and Commissions Handbook. So it's both.
Don't remember the...
And I believe the invitation did cover that, but if not, we'll make sure the liaisons get more information out.
Okay. Yeah, that was my only question on that.
Right.
I will tell you on the positive note that while sitting there waiting for item number seven, which I have a card on that, I did go through 39 pages of the handbook. There were a couple spacings. The most interesting thing I learned was that when you're doing the chair and vice chair and secretary, you can actually nominate yourself. So, hey, I was paying attention. So anyway, I appreciate it. I thought it was very well-written, no red flags that I saw in those first 19 pages. So I just wanted to, to give you that comment.
Sure. And just to follow, follow up, if I could, the invitation is Brown Act/Boards and Commissions Handbook training.
Okay.
But, you know, I, I...
I missed that. I'm sorry.
We could have sent out another email to explain that, so sorry.
And, yeah, I missed that. Sorry.
You know, just from personal experience, we had a training, I think, six months or so ago. I could only do the first hour and a half or so, but I talked to the trainer and was allowed to do the last hour and a half via video. So I just watched, watched the tape and, you know. So don't miss your 100-year-old man's birthday.
Yeah. I was just honored to be invited. Okay. Anyway, thank you all very much. Thank you, city manager. Again, yeah, 39, 19 out of 39 pages, and I'm still awake. Okay? So, no, very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Akins. Bill Miley.
I wasn't planning on speaking because it looked like an overwhelming job to go through this and critique it. this and critique it. But now that I know that this is a product that came from the city managers, one of the city managers' former cities, it seems to me that it would be important to know how it differs from the one you are currently following. And that should be a job, I would think, of the city manager's staff, to show key changes that might exist between what you have now and this one, kind of red-line stuff. Because I'm assuming that the one you have now is pretty good, and you have a few changes, but why adopt a brand-new one that comes from someplace else? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Anything online?
Yes, Mayor, we have Larry. Larry, you have the ability to unmute now.
Thank you. Hey, I'm glad you're all very happy that I'm speaking. I hope, but Bill Miley, I believe, is correct. What was wrong with the last, the 19 pages? Now we have 34 pages. Mr. Harvey, it's a great idea to present a whole new one, rather than try to rewrite another one and reinvent the wheel. That makes a lot of sense. But since all boards, commissions, and what have you are at the pleasure of the city council, shouldn't the impetus for a new handbook come from them? Have they all read the 34 pages, or 39 pages, depending on how you look at it? 34 pages? Have they compared the 19 pages that Bill mentioned to the 34 pages? Don't you think that the public and the commissioners and all the people who have served on boards in the past 30 years should be able to comment on it and come to some sort of help and assistance? Because they all have been on it a long time, in many cases. So I think Bill is right. Take some time here and look for more clarity. And why do we need a new handbook? What was wrong with the last one specifically? If Mr. Harvey can specify all those changes and it makes sense, by all means, upgrade the handbook, make it more efficient, make life easier on everybody, give more direction, make things like that. So I think, you know, the idea of moving forward on a new handbook if there's a need to, is a good thing. I think you all may want to ask, and you know the question I'm gonna ask, is, why don't you add things like, oh, all applicants who apply for voluntary positions will be interviewed now, next year, five years from now, 10 years from now? Unless it's revised and taken out, that way it's taken out of your bailiwick, so to speak. I mean, we all know, so that would make sense. But this is, it's a good start, but I would agree with Bill. So thank you.
Any more online?
No more, Mayor.
Thank you very much. So the public comments are closed. I would simply say, my reaction is that I did look at the other one, not line by line. I did not see anything in the revision that I thought was procedurally any different. And there are maybe procedural things that we would like to change as a council, but those are individual items, not the handbook as it stands, in my view. For example, the next item, number seven, possibly. So that would be a change to the handbook, including what Mr. Steingold just brought up. If that's our policy, we can take that up, but that would, in my view, not be, let's rewrite the handbook as it stands. So my interpretation of what's being proposed is not any change in procedure, but it was simply an update and, generally speaking, a clarification.
Right. I would just add that sometimes that's part of what you entrust us to do. If it's a better effort just to replace because it's just, you know, a huge amount of red lines and revisions and, you know, confusion, sometimes it's just easier to start with a new document. And again, this is a tool I'm familiar with, that I know has worked somewhere else. Primary change is the last city where this was used was a charter city, which is different than a general law city, so we had to make some tweaks to accommodate, you know, general law, Ojai versus, you know, Charter City, Pacific Grove, but those were minor. Because really, the basic rules of running a meeting and the roles of chair and vice-chair and secretary are pretty universal. And the expectations of what you want your appointed boards and commissions to do, and the swim lanes that you want them to stay in, and what their roles are, it's pretty universal. So we just felt, and this is, you know, the city, Assistant City Attorney and I, in consultation, this was a cleaner and easier way to go. The public, by placing this on the agenda, has the opportunity to weigh in and make comments and corrections, and if they want to, they certainly can. And we fully plan, and that's why the invitation was sent out some time ago, I'm sorry, it wasn't completely clear that we'd be going through the handbook, but it is in the title. This is, this is part of what the training is, not only going through the Brown Act, but going through this handbook. And we will go through it, just to make sure everybody understands. But it, we're hoping that, you know, oftentimes we get calls from commissioners, emails, hey, this happened, that happened, and I'm just wondering what to do. And, you know, I'd go look at the old handbook and, okay, well, it doesn't really address the situation. So this, yes, it's bigger, it covers more, but these are, you know, covering things that come up, that are questions that we frequently get.
My further expectation, oh, please, Mr. Summers, go.
The prior handbook dating back to 2016 was an excellent recitation of the law. This handbook, benefiting from Mr. Harvey's prior experience and nine years of lived experience, reflects a more user-friendly approach to Boards and Commissioners service, with an intention on being more readable, being more livable, and with the adjustments as noted from the prior city to reflect the Ojai experience and Ojai's codes. Thank you.
No, thank you. I was only gonna add that I expect that if one of our chair people on a commission brings up something that's of note, they will bring it to our attention and we will change it.
Absolutely. You can, it's a living document. If revisions are made, needed, we'll do it. Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to move forward with adopting the new handbook, the revised handbook.
Second.
And I'll add that, that I thought there were some changes in this handbook that were, I thought, really good things I hadn't even considered with our previous handbook, and I want to thank staff for their effort.
You know. Any more discussion?
Oh, I'll just comment also that I viewed this as a good document to reflect the, to help a commissioner understand their role with staff, and that's the goal of it. And I do view it as a living document and not Robert's Rules of Order. So maybe fewer questions, you know, an opportunity to have a place to look and get some clarity and to raise questions if there still are any. So I'm, I like using documents that have been successful in other places.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Montgomery?
Roll call. Councilmember Meng.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Roll.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Item number seven, to councilmember request, consider amending commission appointment rules for all commissions or appoint a new chair of Parks and Recreation Commission.
I can give a brief summary. This item stems from a request by Mayor Gilman and Councilmember Meng. It is to consider two different approaches to solve one problem, or perhaps several problems. One is to consider revising the five ordinances that govern the five commissions to delete the chair from the nomination process, or, and/or, appoint a new chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission, reflecting some challenges in the present appointment process. And with that, we can, tonight, the council could appoint a new chair of the Parks and Rec Commission. The council cannot tonight rewrite the ordinances, but could direct us to return with revised ordinances on the broader commission's nomination process. And just as a reminder for those who haven't lived it recently, the present nomination process is a nominating committee made up of the mayor, a rotating council member chosen by the city clerk, and the commission chair, or alternates if there's a conflict, or if a member affirmatively declines to participate, who must participate in the nominating process and must agree unanimously on the nominee for each commission spot, which then comes to council for an up or down vote. And the exhibit includes a copy of the present ordinance for the Parks and Rec Commission. With that, we're available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Summers. Any questions for staff? Let's go to public comments, because I have some discussion to add, but let me go to Brian Akins, and you do as well.
Absolutely.
So my recommendation, again, comes from 10-plus years on the council, two of those as the vice-chair and then six of those as the chair of the commission. I have interacted with most of you in getting the HPC finally up to seven commission members. That took a lot of work, and a lot of that work is done by the chair. We have been through this, my head is still spinning from going through this all the many times. I saw this was on the agenda tonight at 5:00 this afternoon and said, I haven't missed one of these discussions yet, and got here by 5:45, only to find out the meeting was at 7:00. So, to councilmembers' requests, consider amending commission appointment rules for all commissioners or appoint a new chair of Park and Recs. Direct staff to return with ordinances for the city's five commissions to, at a minimum, remove the chair from participating in the nomination committee and selection processes of commissioners. Oh, the nights we all spent going through all of these details, talking about the involvement of the chair. I personally know the chair that you're talking about for the Parks and Recs Commission. I will tell you that I saw her just last night when she came to our Oakview Advisory Commission meeting and lectured the, our board on the fact that we didn't know the Brown Act. I reminded her that I get regular training. To me, the easiest device here is to appoint a new chair of the Parks and Rec Commission and remove the current chair. As you saw, I looked at, when was the last time they met? Was almost two years ago. That was one time, and then since then, there's been solid, unable to do it because they don't have form available. How much that's the chair, how much that's the council, that's, you know, that's up to you. But you need a solid chair. You see that, I'm not the chair any longer, Gina McHatten is now the chair, but you look at, you know, the people who love their commissions, they're generally the chairs. Myself, Smitty, Kathy Nolan, who I've been working with, I came over and visited the grounds here. And then to eliminate them, you take, the person who has interacted with all these individuals can tell what the weaknesses and strengths are, and then go out and see, you know, what it is that will improve the commission as a whole. So I'm kind of voting for item number two. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Akins. That's all the cards I have. Mr. Montgomery, anybody online?
No raised hands, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Public comment is closed. So...
I'll just give a little backstory. So before we were both seated, there was the whole, I don't know what, the incident when they needed to replace the person on the Parks and Rec, and it turned into a, you know, kind of a debacle. Then when I took my seat, it's like, oh, I thought, oh, that was so important, because they said we need to fill the seat, because, like you just stated, they've gone so long without a meeting. So I took that as a priority, you know, got all of the applications, everything, you know, reached out to everybody that applied. A lot of them said, oh, it's been, you know, a year to two years that they filled out their paperwork and hadn't heard from anybody. So they were surprised that I reached out, and I just feel it was the right thing to do. Did have some issues with communication as far as with the current chair, Susie Taylor. So I reached out to Matt and said, you know, what are our options? And he explained to me how it worked, gave me the number, Sage's phone number. So I reached out to Sage, who I've known for years and years through OUSD, and asked, you know, like, what she felt, would she be interested in taking the position? So she felt, gave me her information and, you know, how she feels about Susie, and said she was wonderful as a chair, on and on and on and on. And I said, oh, I feel kind of silly now, like, you know, please give her my phone number. So I did reach out to Susie. She filled me in with the backstory. And so, bottom line, we had, you know, a long conversation, and she's willing to continue. You know, I said, we're working on things, we're gonna have meetings with the commissions, get everything dialed in, let's go over the applications, all of that stuff, without bringing up, you know, dirt with past people.
Thank you for that. My thought is, it's the last commission that we need to fill up. We have had, not just me, but many challenges communicating. So my initial thought is, I want to get this commission filled as soon as possible. And so my first idea is to replace the chair with the vice-chair, not work on changing all the commission pieces right now for the reasons Mr. Akins said. I am interested in looking at that, but I'm not interested in holding this up for that. So I would like to do that right away, and I hope that we have a vice-chair who could step up that would meet this. Now, just to say, it's an extremely cumbersome process, and I was sitting where you're sitting out there in the audience when these guys came up with it, and I was for it. I'm seeing how difficult it is, so I think it's worth looking at. I just don't want to hold this one up for that. That's my two cents. But I want to hear from others.
So I think there are certain situations where it's difficult when you have multiple seats and 11 applicants, and you're committed to interviewing them all. This is a model that doesn't really work. That's a rare occasion and an exception, I find. So I have used this process on a number of commissioners, seating them, and I haven't found it to be cumbersome. If you have 11 applicants, yes. If you have two applicants, or even three applicants, no. It is actually rather smooth. I also very much support what Mr. Akins said about the chair is an integral part of that nomination process. I think as is the mayor, and I think as is a council member. So I don't, I don't see that. I see there are challenges in specific situations, particularly the Park and Rec with the number of seats to be filled, the number of applicants, and a difficult time arranging that by a communication. And, you know, I mean, I reached out many times, and, you know, I have somebody willing to start a capital campaign for a pool at Seoul, but I can't get that person on the Park and Recs Commission. So that I find very, you know, very difficult, and, you know, I'd like to move that forward. I would support, I don't know Susie, but I would support, I would support bringing up the vice-chair to be the chair and seeing how that goes. And if the next election kind of comes around and the commission would like to, you know, renominate Susie to be chair, I think that's great. And that would be up to the commission. I also know that for this particular Park and Recs Commission, the chair, and I'm assuming some of the commissioners, were not in support of going to seven members for exactly the reason of not being able to reach, to reach a quorum. And that was not a decision they made, it was a decision that Luis and James made, and they were not very happy about that, just because of the quorum number. So that's kind of my take on it. I support the, I support the current model. I think that generally it works, and when it's too complicated to work, then you need to figure out a workaround.
Thank you, Ms. Roll. Yes, Ms. Lang?
Yes. I, I agree, I agree with Councilmember Roll, and so I won't reiterate a lot of those points, but I do think that we need to move forward with the Parks and Recs Commission nominations. And so I'm in favor of appointing the new chair, and Sage is great, and also Susie Taylor is great, too. You know, we've been working with her for a couple of years, and, and so I trust that, I trust that, that, that if she wants to step up again, that there could be an opportunity for a future nomination. But in the meantime, we've, we've got to move forward.
Thank you. And I would add, it's only gonna be difficult this one time, because we have all these applicants and we need to fill it up. So it'll be more like two or three in the future. So my, my proposal, I would like to hear from everybody else, would be to replace the chair with the vice-chair and hold off on the procedures for now. Procedure revisions.
If, could also thank the current chair for her years and years of work and her shepherding through of the master plan for Sarzati. I can, you know, she's done a lot of work over the years, and I... I can, you know, she's done a lot of work over the years and I think that should be acknowledged.
Thank you.
I'll make just a couple of comments. You know, facially, the process we have, we settled on is cumbersome. But I will say that I made an appointment to the Parks and Rec that took probably not more than three weeks to go through. But, you know, I think one of the things that I've heard has been a holdup is whether you have to have everybody involved with the interview in the same location. I think we should be flexible enough to allow anybody to attend one of those by a Zoom. I think, you know, phone is probably not good enough, but I would support the idea that you can attend those meetings by Zoom. And I would also support an amendment that says that the mayor and council member making the selection, you know, work in concert with and consult with the chair. But I don't think we necessarily, you know. But we're not, I'm not going to say let's let's make any amendments right now. I support the idea of making a change and hopefully we'll streamline making those appointments and getting those meetings started.
I like that.
I have a clarifying question for the city attorney. We do now allow Zoom. I think what we say is it's highly preferential that you join in person, but if that is not possible, Zoom is acceptable. Is that correct?
Yeah, the present ordinance allows for virtually or in person.
Yeah.
Zoom or in person.
I think you can make a claim that, you know, you can't make it in person. And I don't think it's too onerous to make that claim. So I think it's there for Councilmember Whitman.
Thanks for the clarification. Can I entertain, have anybody give a motion?
Yeah, sure, I will make a motion that we replace that we replace the current chair of the Park and Recs with the vice chair. And that's my motion.
Second. Any more discussion? Mr. Montgomery.
Roll call, Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Mayn.
No.
Councilmember Ruhl.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
I'm going to have to call it, it's ten oh five.
Okay, I know it's ten oh five and we have one left. Can we do it?
I would just really implore the council, we will be very, 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 very brief, but I've held two staff members here since five P M. Tonight and it's.
I would like us to realize that we have a protocol that we stop at ten and we started at five. I will accede to doing this, but I really, really would appreciate it if we make it a goal, not a goal, that we stop at ten and it's an exception when we do not. And I understand we're only six minutes past, so fair enough, but.
We take direction from you guys.
I agree with you.
Okay, thank you.
Wanted to be the rare exception, not the rule.
And Lucas is going to be super duper fast.
No, but speak clearly.
All good, it's all good.
Thank you, Ms. Ruhl.
My presentation is less than a page long. The staff report speaks for itself as well as the resolution and the supporting information. Good evening, my name is Lucas Seibert, I'm Community Development Director here for the city of Ojai. Good evening, mayor and council. Before you, for consideration is a resolution to record a lien on a property located at four one four Buena Vista Drive. The lien is for unpaid penalties linked to violations regarding short-term rentals rental regulations pursuant to Title Four, Chapter twenty-four of the Ojai municipal code in the amount of one hundred thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars. The city of Ojai's short-term rental regulations do not permit the advertisement and rental for short-term stays of less than thirty days. The violations captured and verified include nineteen separate occurrences between October, between April and October of two thousand twenty-four. The administrative citation was issued in July of last year. Once issued, staff, as we do with all citations that we issue regarding S T Rs, we meet with the property owner and discuss the violation. And during the discussion, in this case, we'd offer to compromise through a payment plan. Unfortunately, the owner never signed the payment and never agreed to the to the plan itself. So the purpose for the lien is to secure the unpaid obligations. Staff is recommending the city council consider approving the resolution regarding lien on real property for non-payment of the administrative citation. With that, that concludes my very short presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Seibert. Questions for staff, please.
I have a couple of questions. Matt, I see you've been through this and.
You've been through what's happening here and it's all.
Yeah, both myself and one of our litigators, Matthew Slence, have reviewed this closely and are comfortable if the council so does with imposing the lien.
And then I wanted to, it's my understanding, and I'd like you to clarify if I'm not got it right, that although it's called a penalty, my understanding is the ordinance has a disgorgement provision, which means that if you collect rents that are not legally collectible because of our prohibition, the disgorgement is essentially that you you don't get to keep that money that you weren't allowed to have. And and it gets turned over to the city for the city to use in its enforcement processes.
And in other lawful ways, yes. The ordinance, as recently revamped by the council, imposes fines and penalties and disgorgement of profits.
Yeah, so when we talk about it being a penalty, I think to be more accurate, it should say, you know, penalties and disgorgement. And I think that.
Yeah, I think that's the detail of the lien.
I think that makes the understanding of a hundred thousand dollar obligation a little bit more understandable when the vast majority of that is collecting rents that they had no legal right to collect.
Correct, and it and it goes over, what, about six months of unlawful rentals detailed in the report. So it was a fair amount of of unlawful rentals that added up to the hundred thousand in total.
Those are my questions.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I was just wondering on page seven dash five where it has attorney fees. I'm sure you've put time and energy. Why is there no dollar amount there?
So the estimate so far is thirty-five hundred in fees to date. We're tracking those individually, so we'll make sure if the lien is approved, we'll get the final number up through the day of the lien recording, including, for example, the attorney time in writing up this report and reviewing the report and in writing up the the formal lien documents themselves.
Perfect.
Just for clarification, the disgorgement is actually not the bulk of the, it's the repeated offenses. That's the dollar amount, vast majority that's being asked for. Right, it's the repeated advertising and the renting. So not not to say it's not part of it, it is, but it's not the majority.
I also just wanted to point out as well, all of the repeated communications that that you had. And just for the record, that there's, it's not as if they didn't have any, any warning about this or they didn't, they weren't aware of the law.
It's a very detailed report. Well, before we get into discussion, I have no cards on this. Mr. Montgomery, anybody online?
Yes, mayor, we have one raised hand from a Perry. Perry, you have the floor.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry, I want to make sure. Okay, thank you. I'm Perry Rochansamir, I'm the attorney for Mr. Rahpe Maee, who's the owner of the property. And I would ask that if I could get an extension beyond the two and a half minute or three minutes. But first, I would like to address the fact that this is my client's first violation. He, you know, the the reason why there are multiple citations involved is that is because my client never received the certified letters that were sent by the city. And this is documented, the city is aware of this, all of the certified letters came back. The city had my client's telephone number and email address, but apparently none of this communication was ever emailed to him. As soon as he found out, as soon as the first notification that he received that he was in violation was actually from a collection agency, as soon as he found out, he immediately stopped the short-term rental. We admit that there was short-term rental. My client was not aware of the short-term rental ordinance, he's never lived in Ojai and was not aware of it when he purchased the property. We have no problem with the disgorgement of the rents. We don't even have a problem with the city imposing a forty-five hundred dollar fine, which is three times the fifteen hundred dollar fine. We've pleaded with staff and I'm sure the staff's hands are probably tied as well to reduce the fine to the amount of whatever five thousand something or eight thousand something if you add the disgorgement and to impose that as a fine, but we've been unable to do so. We've also, I don't know if the the city council has seen my letter, but that we've submitted in protest. But Mr. Rahpe Maee lost his, basically is homeless now because his house was in the Palisades and then half of the house was burnt down, basically, and it's uninhabitable. He's also had some medical issues. He's going to be listing the property in Ojai to sell it. He needs the money for his effect, for basically his living needs. We plead with the city council to have, basically to have leniency in this matter because it's a first violation, because he did not know of these statutes, the ordinances prior to renting the unit and because he immediately acted upon learning of this issue and and stopped the short-term rental. And to reduce the amount of the fine to the four thousand one hundred dollars plus the forty-five hundred dollar fine and make that the amount it would be paid forthwith. He simply cannot afford an amount of a hundred thousand dollars to be able to be paid as a fine. Most of this is basically triple daily damages that were imposed by the city. I have more to say if I would be allowed more time.
Excuse me, I think you made your point well enough. Is is there something that's critical to the case that you need to say?
There's a few points that I would like to raise if if allowed. I will leave it to your discretion to if you can.
I think we're okay for now.
Very fast to try to get everything I want and.
I think we we do have your letter, so so I appreciate that. I want to ask Mr. Seibert, how would you characterize that what was just said? In other words, the communication, the attempted communication and was there any attempt via email, telephone or in person?
So when these are co-compliance cases, our go-to is to send the letters. And in this case, I think it was nine different addresses that we had access to. So we sent certified mail to nine different addresses. So it wasn't that, it was one or two. There were several. Our practice is not to make phone calls, our practice is not to send emails. Once we make contact, then we can introduce those, but our first point of contact is certified mail.
So you had nine addresses to send one letter, you sent one letter to nine, I mean, one, one letter nine different times to nine different addresses.
Certified mail, yes.
Certified mail.
Not one time, though. You sent multiple times.
You sent multiple times to nine addresses.
Correct.
And were any of them, they were all certified? Were any of them signed as received? So they were all returned, which means they weren't received, which means that for some reason those addresses, well, we don't know why they were all returned, but potentially don't live it there. I mean, I'm just curious. I mean, the complaint says that he never received them and.
If I could jump in, as I understand it, he never returned the certified letters. He had each time he would call the next day. I'd like staff to confirm that if that's the case.
When we first began sending the certified letters, they were returned unclaimed. USPS will leave a notice on the door three times before they return it. The address that we initially started sending to is nine two six Bienvenida, his home address, where he's saying he lives at now. That's his home address, we continue to do that. When I couldn't get any letter received, I began trying to reach out to his associate, Amen, and the S T R host, Sinaz. I looked up and researched their addresses so that I can send the letters to them as well to get somebody to see this and stop it. It started out at a small amount and then began, kept growing as I continued to try and get these certified letters delivered. We want him to sign for it so we know he received it. If I send a letter just regular mail, he won't, we don't know if he got it. If I send an email, he can say he never received it. So if he signs for it, then we know he got it. And USPS, they will leave the notice on the door three times before they return it to me. And all of these letters, they were left three times before they returned, so they just didn't claim the letter, if that makes sense.
Right, no, I understand what you're saying. And so the the different addresses were actually, when you were reaching out, you were widening your circle of being able to contact him because you weren't getting response from the primary address that you had.
Correct, and I also mailed to his business address that I had found online for Dorehini Construction. I I tried mailing it there and it got returned as well.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious, so basically, if you just decide not to sign it, you decide not to sign it and then it's not received for all intents and purposes. In other words, there's no proof of receiving, but there's nothing that compels him to sign it.
Correct.
He could just decide not to sign it.
Yes.
That's how registered mail works.
Correct.
Okay.
I I had, just one more thing, I had asked him when he did come in, why he didn't accept the certified letters and he said that he never saw them on his door. But, I mean, you, we all know USPS leaves that little sticker every time they tried to deliver it. I mean, I don't know if he saw it or not, but we tried.
But he also was able to reach back out to you via phone call after not receiving the letter, so, right?
Right, and then so when it went to collections, through data ticket, it's very interesting, they're using the same address.
Exactly.
So he reached out to you after, I'm just interested in the story, I don't know why, because I want to go home. Okay, thank you.
Just curious how this is all working.
It's just a heck of a lot of money, you know, it's just a heck of a lot of money.
If I could jump in, I mean, one of the things that was offered and I've experienced, you know, there was, he came into City Hall, there was an offer, we try to work with people, we offer payment plans. We don't, but, you know, we don't want to ruin people financially. That was refused. Certainly, you know, the council could, you have the authority to, if you want to, to direct something like that. I would want you to get the advice of the city attorney and the community development director if you are doing something like that. But that is something that we always try to offer in people that are in the situation.
Yes, I'm not prepared to do that unless someone else is prepared to do it.
Well, I would also suggest that when the the short-term rental fees were raised, which happened at last council, the idea and the intent, if I understood correctly, was to give it teeth so there was some enforcement mechanism because people were not obeying the rules. So anyway.
There wasn't an enforcement mechanism, really. We we put teeth on it, but.
You put teeth, no, you hired an employee. That was part of the, part of what happened. Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
What what would a payment, what were the, what was the payment plan option that you offered? Or what would a payment plan look at?
So on the table in written form to them was a reduction to, down to sixty-nine, so sixty-nine, six nine nine. And initially it came in as a six-month payment plan, but then we extended it out to a year, so we, about five thousand eight hundred dollars a month.
So you reduced it, I'm sorry, you reduced it to sixty-nine, nine and you you extended the payment from six months to twelve months so that it was doable.
Correct.
In your mind.
We were trying to find a reasonable solution.
Right.
The sixty-nine, so it wasn't that we just came up with a funny number. There were, there were also advertisements into the future that we had access to. So we dinged him for that as well. Took those off the table, if he could show us with evidence, verifiable evidence that that those had been removed. He was able to do that, produce that evidence. So then we we thought it was appropriate at that point to say, okay, you're willing to work with us, let's find a, let's find a solution.
That's an attachment H, it's. Page seven dash one one three with the the dollar amount and then what the reduced amount comes from.
Yep.
So I have just one question, I'm curious, so did the man in question or his attorney, so they knew that tonight it was going to be on the agenda, so when did they, how was this sent to them? Or how did they know about tonight's meeting?
They received notification.
At one of the nine addresses that you've used?
I think we, it was publicly noticed, and then we also, through our attorneys, sent them information to his attorney.
We sent it directly to his attorney because we weren't sure he would get it at his specific policy address.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I'm hearing you say, Mr. Seibert, that even if we were to come up with something like a payment plan and a reduced amount, hypothetically, a lien is still in order if the property is going to be up for sale?
That was, yes.
Understood.
Absolutely.
And staff would, would recommend that, given that, as you heard tonight, they're trying to sell the property. The lien ensures that the fine is paid before it sells.
So, question to my other council members, um, is anyone open to re-offering the sixty-nine-nine over six or twelve months? I, I don't know, maybe, maybe not.
I'm not.
I am with the lien, so if it sells within the timeframe, then we collect the amount. But no, I'm open to the, I'm open to the offer and the payment, but with the lien.
Yes.
Yeah, I am too.
Okay, well, then I will make a motion. I would, well, I should ask staff, how do you feel about that? Are you comfortable with that solution?
Yes.
It was a solution we had offered.
Yeah, and so I, I think it's, you know, okay, thank you. Um, so I'm going to make a motion that we, um, we, uh, reduce to sixty-nine-nine as it was over a twelve-month period, but with a lien for that amount that, um, city attorney will, um, you know, put on and take off as appropriate.
Second.
Um, I'd like to modify that because I don't think we should reduce it to sixty-nine. I think we should make the offer and, you know, put payment conditions on him, uh, achieving, you know, getting to that sixty-nine thousand dollar figure. Uh, if we just say, hey, we're reducing it, we're just unilaterally removing a big leverage amount, I'm perfectly comfortable with giving Lucas authority to negotiate with this guy down to what that sixty-nine number is, but I, I want to see him paying checks.
Well, I think that's part of the, the, the motion, is that he has to make monthly payments for twelve months. A lien will go on immediately to secure the sixty-nine-nine, and then he will start making monthly payments. If he were to stop making monthly payments, then, you know, the lien would stay on. Like, I don't see what in there gives him wiggle room to wiggle out of payment.
Mr. Seibert?
Mr. Summers, the payment plan sounds a little bit awkward as it relates to the lien. Can you kind of unpack that for me a little bit?
Yes, I understand it, it would be, reduce the fine amount to sixty-nine thousand six hundred and ninety-nine, impose a lien for that full amount with, in the lien directive, that it be payable in twelve monthly installments of five thousand eight hundred and change.
Yep.
And that if any payment is missed, or if the property is sold, the amount is due in full.
Ah, okay, does that, that does, that actually makes sense to me.
Yeah, that's okay, I agree with that.
Okay, so I have a motion on the table.
Yep, and I seconded. And I, it seems, seems to me, you've made the offer, I think we're acknowledging there may have been misunderstanding possibly at some stage, and we're also acknowledging some mitigating circumstances, and this is, this is our response. Okay.
I just have one question, Matt. So if you place a lien and he has the option of making his payments, so if he doesn't make his payments, the lien is there, so what's the, what's the motivation debate? You know what I mean?
The motivation to pay is, if he misses a payment, the full amount still owed is due right then, so we could foreclose the lien at that point and force a sale.
The full amount, meaning the, the one hundred thousand, it goes back to that if he misses a payment?
Council could set it at the full, that would be a policy choice. I understood the motion to be set at the, at the lower amount, sixty-nine thousand six hundred and ninety-nine. But his, his incentive to make the monthly payments is to avoid the council, the city pursuing collection of the full amount, which could include any other collection tool in the collection toolboxes beyond merely a lien.
But when you say the full amount, just for clarification, we're sticking with the sixty-nine, not going back to the other?
At the sixty-nine, not, not returning back to the hundred.
I would also, if he's trying to sell the house, he could get the money for the payment in the house price right now, in this market, it's, it's, and it would be done. So we have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a point I'd like to make for the record, I know you've closed the public comment period, but we have the two individuals involved currently with raised hands on Zoom. But again, I know you've closed the public comment period.
I think we should hear them.
Okay. First we'll have Payman, followed by Perry again. Payman, you have the ability to unmute?
Yes, I'm here to talk. I'm sorry to bother you, I know it's like late, I'm sorry, I, I'm not over there because of my, uh, feet problem. And I'm trying to explain, I have never get any letter. Uh, I understand they send with certified letter, and the only reason I got the collection, because that one wasn't certified, they mailed it to my place, and the minute I opened that one, I stopped by in the city, the day after that, talked with all people over there, and I canceled everything in that day. Even when they said to me, uh, for the future, you cannot eliminate that one, even if you cancel, you have to be, uh, you, you get the fine, but I stopped all of them. I never knows that, and the only reason, I was thinking Airbnb has to know all this detail about the, each city, how the rule and regulation is, and the Airbnb, if the Airbnb knows, uh, or open for day-to-day night, uh, we can do that. And the minute I find out, I stopped all of them, and, uh, the city helped me to reduce the amount because they, they find out I stopped everything. And the day after that, I tried to follow all those rule and regulation. And I never knows that, and the minute I find out, I stopped that one, and I, and after that, uh, city knows, my colleagues, Sanaaz and Amin, and we called the city, we stopped by over there, we share all those, uh, addresses and everything. But before that, we got this property certificate of occupancy recently. It means like a two or three months before, uh, that Airbnb which was happened. And a lot of people in the city knows my phone number, my email address. I wish they called me, they said, okay, you have the mail here which was returned. I have never get any kind of the mail, swear to God, I have never get any mail. And the mail which I got from the, uh, collection company wasn't certified, they put it in my mailbox and opened that, and I fall that night because of that amount, because it was like hundred something thousand dollar. And if I haven't signed that one because I didn't have the money to make a payment, even like a six thousand, seven thousand, I got this property with loan and after that hard money to do the construction, to clean that property. And right now, uh, I was living in Palisade, my parents' family home, and we lost that one, and I'm right now with my girlfriend. Uh, and I just tried to explain my situation, and the money is a lot for.
Thank you, sir, and there's one more?
It, it's the same individual, Perry, we, we fulfill our obligations.
Okay.
For that one.
So that we have a motion and a second, any changes?
I just have one more question.
Please.
So, if you place a lien, and it's, you know, if he sells a property or whatever, does, is interest being earned on that? Because what if he's just saying that I'm going to sell my home and he's not? And then, the money's tied up for?
It's my understanding there's no interest that's earned from that, it's the, it's the amount.
It's just a straight amount, there's no interest earned on a lien, but it does get collected upon any sale.
Yeah, right, okay.
And it, and he's required to make a monthly payment, so there's no just saying I'm going to sell and, you know, I'll pay you when I do. I mean, he's got to make his monthly payment or all becomes due.
And at that point, we could foreclose the lien and force a sale.
And we would.
And I would, we would turn to council in the conversation, but I would expect that that'd be the direction, is to foreclose the lien if he doesn't make the monthly payment.
And I, I just want to, I, I wanted to offer my compassion and my sincere condolences for the losses. And it's always a tough position when we have a law and we have people who are being fined right now and who are paying it, and it, it's not fair to make exceptions for one person when we're, when we're doing this to other people too. So I, I, I wish it were different circumstances under which we're having this conversation, and I, and I just wanted to, to express my, my, my sincere compassion and condolences.
I agree. So we have a motion and a second, Mr. Montgomery?
Roll call, council member May.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Council member Whitman.
Yes.
Council member Roll.
Yes.
Wonderful, okay. Very quickly, under council member reports, I have one thing to tell you, which is, there is a student council meeting, and it is happening here typically the, um, alternating Tuesday when there's a council meeting, but the name is changed, it's not the mayor's youth council, it's the city of Ohio youth council. I'm hoping to involve all of you, it only just really kind of kick-started again, so, we had, I think, six, we had five schools participate last Tuesday, and we had Chief Trina Newman speaking to them about what it's like to be a sheriff and all kinds of questions. So anyway, more coming, just want to let you know what's happening, and I want to involve you all.
And I have one, one question.
Go.
When will we, or when will it be published, the questions from your, um, little town hall?
Well, first of all, it was a big town hall, it wasn't little. But secondly, Mr. Harvey has a response.
Yes, and we, I think, need to go through those questions and see what is on the current Cabin Village landing page and what is not addressed there, and, and I've not done that, so I, I can commit to getting that finished by early next week.
There's an additional piece, which is several of the questions were answered in the video. So we want to point, we want to say, oh, this question is in the video, roughly speaking, one hour in or something like that, without being too tedious, so. Yep.
So I got, yeah, I've got a quick, uh, report. On Monday, I attended the opening of, uh, OI Valley Organics, which is the, um, place you can take your green waste.
Yes.
So cool, you know, next to the river bottom, uh, out past the Flora Gardens, and, uh, I'd actually like to extend an invitation to have the owner come and present on his operation. It's a, it's a, it's a great thing because not only is it diverting, uh, trash that would go to the landfill, but it, it's also, I mean, he's got a viable financial model to do this as a business, which means that it's sustainable.
I'm seeing head knobs, and the city, deputy city clerk has put this on the working.
I'll, I'll get you the, the, the owner's name.
Great, we'll add it to the working agenda.
We were emailed actually the opening too, so we've got that.
A question for the mayor, um, so I'm sorry, you had how many kids come to your, uh, Ohio city?
Um, there were five schools, and I want to say, just, we had a little bit of a hard time getting it going. The last one was successful, um, I'm, I'm going to say twenty, twenty kids.
And, and you had representatives from Nordoff?
Not as many as I want, and I'm working with OUSD, so I'll be at their meeting tomorrow night, and I'm working with Cheryl on potentially going to Nordoff, I do know the principal and all that, so, speaking in some classes, bringing something to say, this, you guys are the ones who are going to have to, for the most part, besides the private schools, work with us on this stuff, so I really want to bolster that enrollment there.
Yeah, great, I, I, I mean, I think that involving the public schools, which, you know, the public schools have not been deeply involved in the council, you know, to date, and I think it's really, really important that the public schools, as a student, as a project of public schools my entire life, except for graduate school, um, you know, I, I think we need to, thank you for reaching out for them and making that effort, and if you would like support on that, as also as a public school teacher, for many years, I'm happy to do that.
Well, I'm hoping to involve everybody to, first of all, anybody can come, I'll publicize it, but then, everybody will come and speak when they are available and interested too. Yep. Yes, Mr. Harvey, anything?
No report, thank you.
Okay, meeting adjourned.